Okay, I think we're ready to begin.
All right. Before we begin our regular agenda, we have a special presentation on the Greenpoint- Williamsburg 2005 rezoning by Katie Ferrara-Ayano of the Brooklyn office.
Great. Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm Katie Ferrara-Ayano, Planner for CD1 in the Brooklyn office of DCP. And I'm here today to share a presentation that we gave recently at a community discussion hosted by City Council member Stephen Levin. The council member had, and residents, had requested an update on development that's happened in Greenpoint-Williamsburg in the waterfront area since it was rezoned by the city in 2005. And the department knows well that when discussions are happening in our communities about development and neighborhood change, they're certainly not limited to buildings and construction projects. They're also about demographics, jobs, affordability, infrastructure, public investment, et cetera, and how those issues are affected by neighborhood growth. So this analysis looks at the 2005 Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning in terms of those questions. It's not completely comprehensive to every question we or the community possibly ask about the area, but it is a set of data and findings that are helpful in the public discussion about this rezoning and have also been helpful in the department's own analysis about, of the effects of zoning and policy tools. So the full version of this presentation, which we gave in November, is online at DCP's website, nyc.gov/nyc-economy. In this case today, I'm going to take us through kind of a highlight reel of some of the topics and findings, and then I'll be happy to take some questions. First, I'll go over a brief overview of the two rezonings that affected land use regulation and development in Greenpoint-Williamsburg in 2005 and then in 2009. And then I'll share what we've gathered on how things have changed since the rezoning on the waterfront was approved. And I'll go through findings on housing stock, population and demographic change, jobs, unemployment, open space and parks, and then updates on other city investments and ongoing planning for the area. So first, just taking a step back to the early 2000s, the rezoning of the Greenpoint and Williamsburg waterfront was done after years of economic change and community calls for action. The factory and shipyard economy that had occupied large waterfront lots and provided jobs for decades were clearly declining and disappearing by the 1990s. And at the same time, there was an influx of people seeking an affordable neighborhood to live, and many of them were moving into former industrial buildings in the area. So in 2002, Community Board One completed Community Plans, or 197A plans, calling for land use changes that were prioritizing new housing, modern job opportunities, and public access to the waterfront. So out of that time came two city-led rezonings. The research that I'm sharing today is focused primarily on the 2005 waterfront rezoning. This is the area in red. It covered 184 blocks along about two miles of the East River shoreline. And on the waterfront, the rezoning allowed for new residential uses where they weren't allowed before, so largely updating M-zone waterfront blocks to residential and mixed use, while also creating the city's first mid-density voluntary inclusionary housing program. Open space and waterfront access were also goals of that rezoning, which created a waterfront access plan for shoreline properties, as well as city commitments to map large areas of new park. The map also shows the city's 2009 rezoning next door, the area in yellow, which was a commitment that came directly out of the waterfront rezoning approval. And the intent there was to create height limits across the existing residential neighborhoods, plus a little bit of growth and affordable housing opportunities on a few major corridors. And so shown here are just a few examples of what kind of development was facilitated by each rezoning, and importantly, what the community has been seeing in those areas since. On the waterfront side, the large sites along the water allow for towers on top of lower bases. And typically, the bases include onsite affordable housing and retail on the ground floor. Waterfront access requirements on those sites generate shore public walkways and active piers on the other side. And then in the contextual neighborhood, the new development lines up with existing homes, and height limits have prevented tower development. So this comes on the questions of how much housing has actually been built since these rezonings. The data we have shown here come from DOB job permits and certificates of occupancy signaling housing unit completions, which are available through part of 2019. And what's shown here is the annual new housing units added in each geography of the area. So the blue portions of the bars are the waterfront, the area that was rezoned in 2005. The orange portions are that upland contextual portion of the area, and the yellow are nearby adjacent parts of the district that were not rezoned in 2005 or 2009, but are adjacent and part of the neighborhood. So across the whole neighborhood, since 2007, as the bars start to increase significantly there, we've seen over 17,000 new homes constructed since then. Not all of these units are occupied yet, but they have been constructed, their unit completions. And the vast majority of that growth, as you can see, has been in the waterfront area. So those are the blue portions of the bars. In the last 10 years, in the waterfront area alone, we've seen an average of over 1,000 new units constructed each year. And we'd note that a portion of these new homes are under affordability programs for restricted incomes. There's been about 2,100 newly constructed affordable homes across the neighborhood, and over 1,000 units preserved at affordable rents through city investment. From data that was shared by HPD in this research, we understand that about half of those, approximately 3,000 affordable units, are associated with the voluntary inclusionary housing program that was part of the rezoning. I'll look a little bit more closely and show where housing development's been taking place and at what scale. The 17,000 most recent unit completions are mapped here across the neighborhood. So this includes the new construction buildings scaled by unit, that's in the orange dots there, as well as building alterations that resulted in additional units compared to previous. So those are the yellow, or kind of hollow there. You can see that the vast majority of the new construction has taken place on the waterfront, and particularly most concentrated in the Williamsburg portion to the south, although in recent years, the concentration of new housing has kind of been growing and shifting towards the north and Greenpoint. Now, on top of that, here is information on the location of new and preserved affordable housing. Again, the concentration of where the new units are locating, those are the dark blue locations, is in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg waterfront. And up to 1,400 of the units that are mapped, their locations are mapped here, came as a result of the rezoning's voluntary inclusionary housing program, as I mentioned. And it's important to note that each of the large sites on the waterfront, you see kind of both sets of data map on top of each other right along the waterfront, because each of the large sites on the waterfront, developed and planned so far, has made use of VIH. So with new housing, of course, comes new members of the community. So next, we dove into a lot of data to address questions about population and demographic change in the area. There's a lot on this slide about the data and where it comes from. I'll walk through it kind of at a high level, and then it'll be helpful, we'll go through some of the demographic analyses to kind of see how this plays out. So we polled quite a bit of data with the help of our population division, but our focus for now is on the Census Bureau data from the 2005 waterfront rezoning area, which is the area that's outlined in blue on the map. As we discuss each demographic trend, the numbers that we're sharing reflect the 12 census tracts that cover that rezoning area specifically, which is the best estimate for the geography that's directly affected by the rezoning action. We investigated demographic trends in that area by pulling Census Bureau data from there, from kind of before, during, and after the rezoning, including background data on the population there since 1990. So one of the first questions is, how has the economic makeup of the neighborhood changed with new development? So to start to address that, we looked at household income. The pie charts here are the 2006, the first one's the 2006 to 2010 American Community Survey average, and the second one is 2013 to 2017 ACS. So numbers reflecting the beginning or starting point of when the neighborhood was rezoned to the most recent data available. The two pie charts are proportioned to the population growth in the area. And what they're showing is proportions of households in the waterfront neighborhood at each of the census tract income brackets, which is under 25,000, up to 50,000, and higher. And we can see between the two that there has been an increase in the portion or share of neighbors in this area who are bringing in higher incomes. So that's the growth in the yellow portion of the graph. And also, an increase, a measurable increase in the household median, the median household income. And that's consistent with the public narrative and what we understand about the area. The increase in higher income that people perceive is real. But what it doesn't necessarily tell us is about the, what has happened to maybe the numbers of lower-income households. And so while we know there's been a lot of growth here and likely a big increase in wealthy neighbors, we wanted to understand what's been happening to the actual numbers at each income bracket group. So we broke out the total number of households 1990 through today at each of those income levels. That's what's shown here, again, each of those three income brackets that are measured. So looking between the rezoning and today, which means focusing on the green bars, which is the beginning of the rezoning period to the yellow bars, most recent, only the number of households making $50,000 or more has actually changed in a way that's statistically significant, or has actually shown any measurable change. So one thing that means is, we haven't seen any real change up or down in the number of lower-income households here. Another demographic indicator of interest here was age distribution. So when you look at the makeup of the waterfront in terms of the portion of neighbors in each age bracket, in this case, under five, 5 to 24, 25 to 49, 50 to 64, and 65 and older, a higher percentage of the people that are there now, or more recently, are children under five, or adults between 25 to 49. And again, this information definitely reflects what we know about the community and anecdotal needs that have come up for, say, services like childcare. And when you look again, then, not just at the percentage of the population here, but at the total number of residents, we can see that the numbers confirm that the increase in children under five and adults 25 to 49 since the rezoning, again, looking at the green bars to the yellow bars, has been statistically significant growth. And at the same time, there's no evidence of a decrease or any change in population in any of the other groups. So we still have a neighborhood with about the same amount of people ages 5 to 24 and 50 and older, as were there prior to or at the beginning of the rezoning. Another demographic area we looked at was how the waterfront neighborhood growth has affected the presence of race groups. Starting with the proportionate view again, we see actually a relatively consistent mix since 2006, with some shifts in the non-white proportion. So there was a reduction in the proportion of residents who identify as Hispanic, 27% to 23% there, as well as small increases in the portions of Black and Asian residents. In terms of absolute numbers of people here, there has actually been an uptick in all of the census tract race groups between the rezoning and today. Now, we certainly see that the growth in white residents has been substantial. That's the second group of bars there, again, focused on the green to the yellow. But at the same time, each group has shown measurable growth. And in the case of the Hispanic population, the first set of bars on the chart, it's actually shown a reversal of a longer-term trend that had been showing population loss for that group in this area. Now, in addition to population and housing change, it was also very interesting to look at the change in economy and jobs for the neighborhood, especially coming out of the 20th century trends that had hit the industrial employment particularly hard on the waterfront here. Shown here is a overall change in number of jobs in the area, and what we saw was 2002 through the recession, a relatively steady employment rate, or number of jobs across the whole Greenpoint-Williamsburg neighborhood, and which is labeled here as the full study area, which includes the waterfront, the contextual or upland area, and also the Greenpoint- Williamsburg IBZ. And then, starting after the recession, so 2010 onwards, there's been really substantial local job growth in this area, particularly in the waterfront area. So it's broken out the green line there, which is a portion of the full study area. In total, it's over 11,000 new jobs across the area in this time, which is a higher rate of growth than the city experienced overall post-recession. We looked more closely at how that growth has affected different wage levels. So what's shown here is the number of jobs in the area essentially less than or greater than a $40,000 a year equivalent, from a pre-rezoning time period, 2002 to 2005, to post-recession, 2010 to 2017. And again, broken down by the neighborhood overall, compared to the kind of sub-geographies. And what you're seeing here is, from 20, prior to 2010, job losses were hitting lower-earning positions really the hardest. The negative side is the bulk of the blue portions of the bars in the upper two time periods. But then, most recently, from 2010 onward, there's been a similar rate of growth really between the higher and lower-wage jobs. It's particularly visible in the waterfront area. And breaking that growth down, this time by sectors, we can see that jobs have primarily grown in retail and hospitality, so the green bars, which includes accommodation and food services. Office jobs, shown in gray, have also substantially grown in the waterfront area and also within the IBZ. And while we see some job loss in certain sectors within the upland contextual area, we are seeing modest industrial job growth, that's the blue bars, recently, across the waterfront, as well as the IBZ. And I'll touch briefly on some of the public assets and investments that have affected this neighborhood, starting with kind of the core community interest in the waterfront open space. The Greenpoint-Williamsburg Waterfront Access Plan, or WAP, was part of the 2005 rezoning. And it placed specific requirements for public access and design on each of the private sites here to help people get to the water, experience the waterfront, and experience it in a unique way to this space. New development on the waterfront has triggered private build-out of more than nine acres of publicly accessible shore public walkway and upland connections adjacent to the waterfront access plan area, with more than four acres additionally currently planned and approved. So these new waterfront access areas are starting to stitch together different sites across the water, including both private sites, as well as new and updated parks. And that includes the Bushwick Inlet Park, which is currently under remediation and development by Department of Parks. Shown here are just a couple of examples of some of our most recent waterfront open spaces that have opened up in the area. The first is 155 West Street, which is an esplanade on the water, as well as supplemental public access area. It's about a half acre, and it was approved in conjunction with a 39-story residential development. The second is Newtown Barge Park, which was updated in coordination with the adjacent Greenpoint Landing development and waterfront. We also shared updates with the community on some select recent investments by other city agencies. Shown here is work, recent work by DOT in gray, DEP in blue, and EDC in orange. There's a lot of information on this map, but I'll highlight a couple of things. It does clarify what kind of roadwork, for example, the community has been seeing, what projects is associated with, including where agencies are working to coordinate to make disruptions as efficient as possible. For example, are the overlapping lines, the overlapping blue and gray lines on West Street, reflect sewer main upgrades that have been completed together with bike lane improvements at the same time. The ferry is also a major investment here, as you can see from where EDC's lines are located. And our analysis, our analysis also included work with our transportation division on commute modes. And we'd note that the recent data shows actually a higher use of the ferry than bus in this area for commute. So it clearly is a resource that's being utilized. I'll end for now on some of the key takeaways that we took from this research and from sharing it with the community. When we did present in November, we took a lot of questions, including what, things that people wanted to know more about. And one of those issues certainly was housing cost and rent burden, and that's something that's difficult to get good data on, but we know it'll need to be part of the next conversation with the community. In terms of what we have been able to share so far, we'd say that the area that was rezoned on the Greenpoint-Williamsburg waterfront has really seen significant development and population growth since then, which has included affordable housing and diverse jobs and economic growth. And it has been interesting to see how that has played out in terms of socioeconomic changes and conditions. For example, not seeing any significant change in the presence of lower-income households in the area that was rezoned, and the total number of residents in each census tract race group increasing locally. I do want to be clear that we can't draw conclusions from this kind of data on individually who may have experienced displacement, or why. What we can say is that we're continuing to plan for diverse community and economy in Greenpoint-Williamsburg, and also that there's continued coordination and commitment from the city's planning and capital agencies to address the needs that come with growth and change here. And we're looking forward to follow the discussions with this neighborhood and what its future holds. So thank you very much for your time. I'd be happy to take questions.
The one other thing that I'll note about this presentation is, it shows the breadth of the skill set within the department. When projects are presented here, most frequently, we see representatives from the borough offices. And obviously, this deep knowledge of the neighborhood is important. But as Katie mentioned, the population division and their ability to analyze demographic data was invaluable. Our waterfront and open space division, our housing and economic development division, and also our capital planning division, which brings together the major capital agencies and increasingly is identifying opportunities for coordinated work, so that streets don't have to be redug up for DEP and then for DOT. And we'll welcome questions. Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, how are you? First, thank you for doing this. I think this kind of analysis and follow-up is exactly the kind of thing that communities are seeking, and that elected officials are seeking, to understand the impact of decisions. I think, you know, you pointed out, excuse me, a couple of different times where people's experience or feeling on the ground differs from the, I think, the data that you just shared. And I think that could be for a couple of different reasons. And, you know, one might be, honestly, the study area. You know, if you look at the waterfront rezoning area versus the context area, I mean, obviously, in the waterfront area, fewer people live there. And so I would be really, I would find it very interesting to see that same analysis that you just did, and have, compare the waterfront area versus the context area, which is where the, most of the population historically has been, and see how that may have changed as a result. I think that could help inform conversations even further. And I think, you know, there's been a number of follow-up policy actions that have happened since the Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning, which focus a little bit more on the preservation of existing affordable housing, in particular, closing the loopholes on the rent laws and things like that. And it would be interesting, I think, to look at units that may have been, rent-stabilized units in the area, again, going to the context area, not just the waterfront area, that may have been lost. Because I think that speaks to, I think, some of the things that people are experiencing or had experienced at moments in time after the rezoning. And so, you know, I would just, again, it's great, this follow-up is great. I think, to me, it just leads to the need for even more analysis, further discussion, and making sure that our policy, our public policies are having the intended impact, not just in the narrowly-defined area that we may be focused on, but understanding the larger neighborhood context.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just following up on that, I found myself thinking about how what you have to report matched up with what we thought was going to happen, and particularly the environmental study. I know that the environmental study for these areas, you know, gave a specific number of units that were deemed to be at risk of displacement. And that's a sort of more targeted look at the same question that Commissioner Deloos was raising. I wonder, have you considered, so obviously, a chunk of work was done at the time of the rezonings to identify the vulnerable housing units. Has any been, work been done to go back and see how accurate that prediction was, what happened to those specific units? It gives us an opportunity to test not only what's happening in the neighborhood, but how effective the environmental review process is in identifying the things that we need to look at. Strikes me that this is a great opportunity to understand our process, as well as our policies.
I think that's, that is, you know, an analysis that has, you know, the community is very interested in, kind of as a follow-up to this, you know, as an initial step in responding to the council member and the community's request. We looked at the neighborhood change essentially since the rezoning through today, which is a different time period than the environmental review was targeting. And the data sets that we gathered to answer those questions about actually what has changed is different than the undertaking and analysis of comparison, of a projection. Could you like to respond?
Sure, yes. Just to add, hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Welcome back.
You've never been gone anywhere.
That's true. I'm just upstairs, really.
Welcome down.
But thank you. And Happy New Year to everyone, too. I wanted to actually just, I think that question, and also one, part of one of the issues that was raised, Michelle's question, I think, is Commissioner Deloos's question, pardon me, is worth highlighting, which is that what we can, what we can do with these data sources, and we can do with the data sources we have available, are identify what happens to groups of people, but it doesn't get at the experiences of individuals, which is much more granular. It's very hard to track individuals. I know that we've been working to support HPD as they look for ways to try to come up with better data sources to longitudinally look at what happens to individual households over time, because that's one of the things that's really, really challenging, to get out of any of the data sources. I think one of the things that, as Katie's presentation highlights, that is newsworthy or noteworthy in this, in this analysis, is that, you know, while we can't say what happened to any individual, people did or didn't experience displacement, groups are still represented in the same quantities that they were earlier. That doesn't mean that they're experiencing the same thing today that they were 10 or 15 years ago, or that the individuals might not be entirely different individuals within those groups, which itself, you know, I think, when you're talking about populations that are economically vulnerable, that's just one of the facts of life for low-income residents, is that they have greater, you know, yeah, I would say, you know, I would just say that their, their ability to sustain their current lifestyle through shocks is more at risk. And I think that's one of the, that is a matter of all the various other policies that can be targeted to individuals. I think how we look at what happens to individuals is something that kind of has to happen in parallel with how we look at zoning and land use and how, what happens to these groups over time. But I think, we want to make sure that, and I think Katie did an excellent job, by the way, of, what we say when we show those data isn't to say that everyone who is there now is living happily ever after. That's not something that we could even assess. The question is, has the context, has the regulatory environment provided an opportunity for groups to continue to be represented in a significant way? And I think that there's a lot of indications here that suggest that that's true.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Katie, I noticed that on one of the graphs, it had a loss of institutional, loss in institutional presence. What is that? Is that municipal or private? And how do you link that to, assuming there's a link between that and the rezonings?
We actually did try to look into this. I mean, these are, these are not individually-tracked businesses or jobs. It comes from a survey. And that is definitely something that came up as striking.
What do you define as institutional?
Hospitals.
Hospitals.
Yes, yeah. I mean, these are, you know, public services, educational.
Right.
I'm not really sure with that, with that loss of up to 1,000, that's scaled there was pretty surprising to us, and something that our Housing Economic Development Division is looking into more closely.
Commissioner Deloos.
Just as a, I'm sure you guys know about this, but kind of in follow-up to Howard's point about the individuals versus the groups, it's a key point. point about the individuals versus the groups, it's a key point, I think, and, you know, one that many academics are trying to solve for right now. And I know that, you know, besides, besides the work that's going on at Princeton to kind of do some of that tracking of individuals, I think the department and HPD are aware, but just in case, I'll repeat it. You know, the Center for New York City Neighborhoods did a study looking in East New York about the rezoning and in particular, moderate-income homeowners, and, you know, how they were individually impacted as a result of the rezoning. And I know that they looked at United States Postal Service data and did, and did get something there, and they published a report about that. So, you know, I don't, that may be just one data source that could be helpful in this case.
Who's there?
That's, I would just say that that is one data source. It has strengths and limitations, but it's one, you know, I think when you have limited data sources, we try to triangulate from as many of them as we can to draw reasonable conclusions.
I'm glad that you also mentioned academics. How much of the research that we do, and I'll use our retail study as an example, is when we see that there is a gap in data, where there's an absence of analysis. And so, we're always pleased when we put out our information briefs or analysis. Part of it is to prompt other academics, other nonprofits, to continue delving into it, and so we view that as a positive.
Well, to that end, because this is such an evolving area, I'm wondering if that couldn't be invited more formally. I mean, you know, think about the effort that was put in understandably on the POPS piece. Like, it would be, I think there'd be an academic, there's an academic community out there and an advocacy community that would welcome a mechanism for formal input on this.
I would say that at least, sort of in an ongoing and informal way, we're certainly working with those researchers to, you know, where possible, sort of share our statistical and demographic expertise in particular, and comment on some of their methodologies. There's been a lot of research out of the Furman Center recently on sort of related topics, but we've been interacting with a lot of those researchers individually. And working with academics, you know, they sometimes guard their conclusions until they're done because they want to make sure that they have their work intact at the end of it. But we certainly are open to working with them in a variety of capacities.
I'll also add, oh, pardon me. Just on a staff level, Terlago mentioned that this was a really interdivisional effort. I'd also say that the response has been really wide from our agency. And as we shared this presentation with the entire agency, I've heard from planners and other staff across, across the department that have pointed me towards research that they've been working on with other organizations or that they have done in their classrooms, either teaching or learning. So, we do know that there's an increasing amount of resources and interest out there that are coming together.
I'll note that right before the holiday season, we had an all-agency meeting, and one of the few projects that we had time to profile was the work that Katie and the team had done on this. And it met with a very warm reception by the other boroughs. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I was wondering, you know, as you look at trends, I understand you can draw a conclusion that there haven't been significant changes, although there have been some, and the trend line seems to be one that does give you pause in terms of, you know, decreases in the population that we know is at risk there. You know, what's your takeaway on that piece? And when we look at the trend lines themselves, you know, there is some suggestion that's something to keep in mind. And how do we think through that, or how does the department think through that in terms of public policy responses?
Right. I think, well, first, I would say that one of the challenges here, I want to make sure to make a plug for the 2020 census, too, because one of the challenges here is that we're working with American Community Survey data, which is sample data. It's great for getting the composition of a group within a large enough sample. Getting to small geographies can be challenging, and getting to smaller subgroups can be challenging. The census, the enumeration is the opportunity for everyone to be counted. I can give Marissa an opportunity to sort of repeat how important this is to the department, to the city, to all of us. But when we have data from the 2020 census, and God willing, it should be sound, complete, good-count enumeration data, that will give us another opportunity to look at this in a more granular way. I will say that when we say that there is no significant change, it's not a conclusion that there has been no significant change, but it's a conclusion that we can't find a significant change. It's not a proof of a negative, it's a, we don't have any information to show a significant change. That's why it's going to be really important to continue to come back once we have full data and do this kind of analysis again. I will say that we should all, we also have, when we look at these things, it's also important to set them in context. So, for instance, I know a lot of the various groups talking about the population trends in Community District One, they're, for instance, the dynamics of how population changes have occurred in Community District One are different from what's happened in some other districts. Community District One had a, going a couple decades back, a very large Puerto Rican population. Citywide, the Puerto Rican population has declined in most neighborhoods, and in many neighborhoods, it's been replaced by other Hispanic groups that have been increasing, such as the Mexican population. Williamsburg is not one of those neighborhoods that has experienced an increase in the Mexican population, but other neighborhoods have and haven't necessarily seen those same changes. So, it's really important for us to look at all of this in the broader frame, look at citywide trends, some of the, I think, pre-existing trends that existed in the neighborhood, and make sure that we're understanding those as well, and how those all play into what public policy can do to provide opportunities to people in every group.
The takeaway, though, is that we, we're not really quite sure, you know, until we get the census, the 2020 census.
I would say the takeaway here is that we are sure about certain things, which is that there has been an increase in the absolute number of residents of the rezoned, the 2005 rezoning area, in every one of those demographic, of those race and Hispanic origin subgroups. That we do have a statistically sound determination of. There are some, certain other items there where we found no statistically significant change, and that's where we can continue to go back and look at it. For instance, what's happened to the population of low-income residents, we found no statistically significant change. There's no indication in the data of a decrease in that. There's no indication of an increase either, but we will want to come back. And that's going to be actually, that is not 2020 census data, that is American Community Survey data, so we're going to have to continue to monitor that over time.
On the one point of the growth in the population of young people, I mean, does that impact, you know, school construction authority decision-making?
One thing, it's interesting about that, is you sort of see that the timing of the growth of the school-age population is sort of just now occurring. You saw the age-five and up group hadn't increased yet, but those children, if they don't move out of the neighborhood, are going to be aged, are going to be public school-aged, you know, for the next decade. So, the SCA actually looks at enrollment statistics and demographic trends that we work with them to provide, as well as all the information that we can supply them on anticipated housing construction based on building permits and planned projects. So, they absolutely incorporate all of that into their capacity planning work.
And actually, Commissioner Ortiz, to your point of the policy responses, we share this information with other agencies because so frequently, the policy response isn't something which is a land use or a zoning tool. And I think the SCA is a perfect example, where we work hand-in-glove with them and HPD, Department of Buildings, to help them, give them the information that they need to make sound decisions about where the school needs are.
And if I could, just one, one of the key topics that came up as kind of an ideal, you know, part-two follow-up to this, this type of research, would be a question about how, what has been the trend in family size, household size? Is that something that we work directly with, with SCA to understand, like, you know, you know, what is, what's the trend in that, in that area, and how does it affect their projections? So, it's something we'd like to be able to share.
Commissioner Levin.
Katie, back at the beginning of your presentation, you indicated that when you took this out to the community, you got a lot of questions about rents. And I have to confess that when I took a quick look at this over the weekend, because we get the preview of the presentation, gee, I wonder, I wonder what they know about changing rent levels? And you indicated that was something that was going to need more work. What avenues do you have for studying that, and do you, how do you intend to go about that? Or to what extent do you intend to go about that? That's obviously the key question for many people at ground level.
Yeah, of course. So, we knew that was going to be a big question, and we did aim to, we did work with our Population Division to get into the data. And my understanding is that the data in these ACS and census, what's tracked is kind of, is how much, what proportion of the neighborhood is greater than or less than a certain rent level, which really doesn't necessarily get at the kind of aggregate, the effect of, of, you know, how that rent is affecting the changing levels of income in the neighborhood. If there's anything for Howard to add.
This is, this is a really difficult area of data collection and analysis.
Yeah, of course, it's the one that the public most wants us to answer.
And perceives probably better than any of us, because everyone is paying their rent, more or less, at the end of every month. So, the, a couple of things about it. One is that in a neighborhood where you're seeing a lot of housing added, it's very difficult to use things like medians and averages because particularly when the majority of units in most, in a neighborhood with active market reconstruction, where the majority of units are going to be market-rate units, that is going to move not just your average, but your median upwards when you have a significant addition. And so, you will see the composition effect showing up in those figures. Looking at the number of units that are available below a rent level would be the sort of ideal, but that's really difficult because there's not a, there's only sample-sized counts of those things. And so, we obviously like to use the Housing and Vacancy Survey where possible, but getting below the community district level at any sort of meaningful level sort of runs up against those things. So, we're working with HPD to find out what can be done, if there are ways to do things like increase oversample certain types of units, neighborhoods, in order to get better sample size so that you can drill down on some of those issues, would really be of help on that. I will also just use the opportunity to caution everyone, when you see sort of brokerage reports about end-of-year sort of, you know, the price, the average rent in such-and-such neighborhood is here or there, these things suffer from the composition effect even more than other sources because, you know, when a single, large building goes on the market, all of those units are on the market, and then all of a sudden, your median for a small area can really jump. And the contrast in Katie's presentation between, you know, the average or the composition, you know, averages, medians, sort of generalizations about the total versus absolute numbers of what's available to people at different income levels, is really one of the things that we're trying to drill down on and continuing to look for sources. I think actually, one of the interesting things about this, to Commissioner Deloos's point earlier, is that academic research, sometimes using proprietary data sources that aren't available to us, but sometimes those researchers do have creative ways of trying to get at some of these issues and try to give us other sources. And so, we are continuing to work at ways to get at some of those really challenging issues.
Yeah, thanks. And it was a great presentation. Thank you. I was wondering, in regards to that question about data sources, whether or not you go outside the city to New York State, for instance, HCR, and whether or not they have information that could be helpful in this process.
Let's say, as actually, a kind of a question that gets to the new state of how HCR maintains its databases, and there are some changes to that in the rent law changes last year as to what information they have to essentially make public and at what kind of geographies. I think that's sort of an evolving area. Historically, there's a lot of confidentiality issues with HCR data to, you know, about individual rents and individual buildings or units. But, you know, working again with HPD, who works very closely with HCR and a variety of topics, if there is publicly available data that we can use that helps shed light on these issues, we would certainly use it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Capelli.
First, following up on Commissioner Edie, Department of Finance? Department of Finance has information that would probably be helpful to you on the rent side?
The, yes, though there are, the data set is under-inclusive because it relies on, certain categories of buildings are not required to report. And so, you get, especially amongst smaller buildings, you get sort of a under-inclusive data set. And then there, you know, for instance, there are other issues about the Department of Finance data that sometimes there are erratic data about rent registration, registration from year to year, you have to look at it over the long term. These are absolutely all sources that we make use of. It's, there's no silver bullet here, and as I mentioned earlier, I think we have to triangulate where possible among all those sources.
And then my, the question I was initially going to ask, what about commercial rents?
We have, commercial rents are sort of an even more, they're not reported in any formal way. So, I think that's a, we rely on industry sources to track commercial rents. There are, of course, with all those sources, there's asking rent, there's contract rent, there's, you know, rent at new lease, and there's existing rents. Those are all things that have to be taken into account. We do use some of those industry sources. There are other proprietary sources like CoStar that are available for certain things that we sometimes can obtain, but commercial rents are also difficult to generalize about.
You're getting a deep insight into the challenges that, well, basically, Howard's divisions confront.
And let me say, I appreciate all of the attention to detail on these questions because these are the issues that we are trying to grab with every day as well.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to, for maybe a sense of relief, switch to something that may be not quite so quantitative. And that has to do with waterfront public access. You have a slide that shows how much of the public access areas have been constructed and approved, so I guess those are well underway. I'm wondering if there's enough of it now for us to have learned anything about how to design this contiguous waterfront access strip. It strikes me, at the time this rezoning went through, is really one of the early times that we were trying to impose a standard design on a whole bunch of properties that were, we knew were going to be developed over time at different rates. But is there enough there now? And we were, you know, measuring the size of benches and designing pavers and what the fences had to look like, and you're smiling as if to indicate that you remember all of those conversations. Do we know enough yet about how all of that played out in reality to have learned any lessons for planning these kinds of contiguous public access areas in the future?
So, a couple of things. This area has been, I would say, an invaluable resource for the department in terms of our continued engagement on those topics with both the Department of Parks and our very active community that are very attentive and care a lot about the outcomes on their waterfront. So, we've continued to have an ongoing conversation about kind of what's working and what's not working in terms of the products and design elements that have gone on each one of these built-out sites. At the same time, and also, our, we had last year, kind of the, I would say, maybe a prequel to this discussion with the community was at the end of, around the end of 2018, the Brooklyn office and Urban Design Divisions went out and had a really detailed conversation with the members of the Community Board and the Council Members' Office to kind of speak publicly about what's, what's gone on there, and how does the WAP work, and how do these regulations work? And that's been just part of an ongoing conversation about getting feedback about, about kind of what are the ideal outcomes here, and what do they take, what kind of investment do they take? At the same time, you know, this has all taken place, this growth has taken place kind of at the same time as we're learning a lot more about resiliency, and a lot of these sites have had to respond post Hurricane Sandy. And through those designs, many of which were kind of the design and planning process were disrupted by thinking more critically about resiliency in the wake of Sandy, we, the department has learned ways that we can continue to be more supportive in facilitating what are kind of the highest and best elements of resilient design and kind of natural features on these sites, which is an interest here.
So, are those at cross-purposes with each other?
Oh, no, it's just.
Design and the urban design goals?
No, not at all. I mean, especially, especially with what the community here really wants to see. They want to see, you know, more of those kind of natural buffer elements, access to the water, things that are providing, providing both, both access and resiliency at the same time. And it's something that our department, our Urban Design Division is very supportive in these ongoing certification and authorization review processes. We've, we've learned kind of what ideal and consistent outcomes we really want to push for with each site.
If I had to say at a high order, the focus on resilience. If I had to say at a high order, the focus on resiliency is fundamentally different from when this was first. But the second is, I think we've learned a lesson about over specificity. And I'll use as an example, in some of the WAPs, there has been a requirement to have your trash, your garbage collectors have an opening of a certain number of inches. It was a very beautiful trash collector. It's no longer made. And so that degree of specificity is something that we, as a department, would look to avoid.
And on the resiliency topic, I just can illustrate with one thing that's come up. I think the commission has seen other projects as well that have tried to grapple with minimum percentage planted area and grade changes that you are executing in order to provide for a more resilient landscape. And obviously, there's a limitation to how much of you can plant when you have steeper grades or steps. And that's one of the things that we have seen in individual projects, as well as, as we look at areas, we've been looking at how to strike that balance in a way that's suitable to enabling people to make those kind of terraced and other kind of landscape forms that might not be as planted as we might have imagined them when we were thinking of this as a flat esplanade.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, January 6, 2020. The time is 1:52 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12. Our presenter is Connie Chan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by 1529-33, 60th Street LLC for a zoning map change and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of three buildings containing approximately 102 dwelling units, including 32 units of affordable housing and 32,000 square feet of commercial space in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn in Community District 12. The project is comprised of 20 tax lots in the southwest portion of Community District 12 in Borough Park, near the border with Community District 11. The project area is outlined in yellow here in this aerial. There are 20 tax lots again, and they are located along 60th Street between 15th and 16th Avenues. In red are the sites of the proposed development, which I will describe momentarily. 60th Street is a local east-west corridor that is 80 feet wide, and 15th and 16th Avenues are also 80 feet wide. The project area and the surrounding area are characterized by a mix of manufacturing, warehousing, auto-related uses, as well as community facilities and residential uses. Along the southern border of the project area, where you can see the greenery, it's, it's an open rail cut for the Bay Ridge branch of the Long Island Railroad. This is used for freight traffic and sees between one and two round trip trains per day. There are two to three story residential buildings that are located to the west, to the north, and to the east of the project area. And along 16th Avenue is a mix of two to three story residential and mixed use buildings, as well as one story commercial uses and community facility uses, such as houses of worship and religious schools. The New York, the NYPD 66 precinct house is located at the northwest corner of 59th Street and 16th Avenue. Immediately south of the Long Island Railroad rail line is a site that is currently under construction. The site is bordered by 60th Street, 16th Avenue, and 61st Street. And this development is comprised of 13 six-story buildings that rise to 70 feet in height and contain a total of 128 dwelling units. This site is known as the Maple Lane Views Development and is the result of a rezoning that was approved by the City Planning Commission in 2013. South of 61st Street are one-story manufacturing, warehouse, and auto-related uses, as well as three-story residential buildings and one to two-story commercial buildings. And here is a land use map. You can see that the project area is served by two subway lines. The 62nd Street Station of the D train is located approximately one block west at the intersection of New Utrecht Avenue and 61st Street. And the New Utrecht Station of the N train is located approximately two blocks south at New Utrecht Avenue and 63rd Street. The B9 bus connects Bay Ridge to Kings Plaza and stops along 60th Street, including stops at both 15th and 16th Avenue. The project area is located entirely within an M11 district. M11 districts allow for a range of commercial and manufacturing and industrial uses at an FAR of up to 1.0, and select community facility uses are permitted up to an FAR of up to 2.4. The maximum base height in an M11 district is 30 feet or two stories, with a sky exposure plane governing maximum building height. R5 districts are located to the east, to the north, and to the west of the project area. These districts permit residential uses up to a maximum of 1.25 FAR and community facility buildings up to a maximum of 2.0 FAR. Buildings have a maximum base height of 30 feet and a maximum building height of 40 feet above a 15-foot required setback. There is an R6A district mapped to the south of the project area, just south of the Long Island Railroad rail cut. Again, this is the result of the 2013 Maple Lane Views rezoning that I mentioned earlier. R6A districts permit a maximum of 3 FAR for residential uses. And buildings have a maximum base height of 65 feet and a maximum building height of 75 feet above a required setback. Of the 20 tax lots within the project area, which is outlined in the black dotted lines shown, nine tax lots are owned by the applicant and are the site of the proposed development, which is comprised of three new buildings. 11 tax lots are affected by the proposed actions but are not part of the proposed development. So here's a closer look at the 20 tax lots within the project area. Again, each of the proposed development sites, which are owned by the applicant, they're shaded in red, and they're labeled with a letter for each of the proposed new buildings, A, B, and C. So the applicant does not own the other tax lots in the project area. So I'll now describe each tax lot, starting with the lots on Block 5509, which is the block to the north. Lots 1 and 73 are 14,500 square foot and 2,000 square foot tax lots that contain a two-story furniture showroom and warehouse. Each lot is built to approximately 1.5 FAR. Lots 72 and 71 are 2,000 square foot tax lots that each contain a two-story residential building with four dwelling units each. Each tax lot is built to approximately 1.5 FAR. Lot 70 is a 2,220 square foot lot containing a two-story residential building with four dwelling units, built to 1.4 FAR. Lot 68 is a 3,264 square foot lot containing a three-story medical office building, which is built to 1.3 FAR. This building was constructed in 2016 with a certificate of occupancy issued in 2018. An ambulatory medical use currently occupies the building. This building was constructed with the understanding that it would be demolished contingent upon the approval of the proposed actions that are the subject of this application. Lots 65 and 64 are 4,800 and 3,200 square foot lots that contain a 20,000 square foot two-story jewelry manufacturing establishment. The lots are built to 3.7 and 1.7 FAR respectively. A BSA variance was granted in 2005 affecting lots 64, 65, and 68 to permit the expansion of the existing jewelry manufacturing business. However, the approved expansion did not occur. Lot 62 is a 4,000 square foot lot containing a vacant one-story warehouse building, built to 1 FAR. And Lot 58 is an 8,000 square foot lot that contains a one-story 1 FAR building housing an automotive repair facility. Moving on to Block 5516, which is the block to the south. Lot 4 is a 4,660 square foot lot that contains a one-story building housing an automotive use, built to 0.6 FAR. Lot 9 is a 2,000 square foot lot containing a three-story mixed use building, built to 2.1 FAR. On the ground floor is a convenience store, and there are two dwelling units above. Lot 10 is a 2,000 square foot lot containing a three-story mixed use building, built to 1.6 FAR. There's a computer repair shop on the ground floor and two dwelling units above. Lots 11, 12, and 13 are three 2,000 square feet tax lots that each contain a two-story residential building with two dwelling units each. And the FARs for those buildings range from 0.6 to 0.8. Lots 14 and 17 are 5,800 and 3,800 square foot lots that contain a one-story HVAC supply warehouse building, just built to 0.9 FAR on each lot. Lot 20 is a 1,137 square foot lot with a one-story auto repair facility. And Lot 21 is utilized as accessory parking for that automotive use. The businesses that are currently located on the tax lots that make up the proposed development site, in red, have been notified of the proposed actions that are the subject of this application and are in various stages of planning for relocation to other areas within the neighborhood. So here are some photos showing the existing conditions along 60th Street. The top two photos are facing west. On the left is the view from the intersection of 16th Avenue. On the left, under the scaffolding, you can see the Maple Lane Views Development, which is currently under construction. On the right is a point further west between 15th and 16th Avenues. And you can see the LIR rail cut on the left, which is where the trees are along the fence. The bottom two photos are facing east along 60th Street. And on the left is the view from the intersection at 15th Avenue. You can see the furniture showroom on the left and the mixed use buildings on the corner on the right. And the right, on the right photo, the bottom right is a view a little bit further east. So here are some photos showing the existing conditions along 15th Avenue. So the top two photos are taken from 60th Street. The left is the photo facing north. You can see the furniture showroom on the right. The right is, is the view facing south. And then the bottom left is the view facing north along 15th Avenue from 61st Street. You can see the LIR rail cut on the right, again, where the trees are located. And the bottom right photo is facing south along 15th Avenue from 59th Street. So here are some photos that show kind of the frontages of the proposed development sites. The photo on the top left is the frontage of proposed building A, which is on the north side of 60th Street. That's the one-story automotive use. On the bottom left is the frontage of, of site building B. This is four tax lots that, they're comprised of, you know, starting from left to right, the, the yellow residential building that's set back, the two, the, the medical facility building in the gray and the white, and then the two-story jewelry manufacturer. On the top right is the frontage of building C, which is on the south side of 60th Street. And so you can see closest kind of on the left is the HVAC supply warehouse. And then further, as you go along the left, is an automotive use and an adjacent parking lot. The applicant is proposing three new mixed use buildings with ground floor commercial space and residential units above. All buildings would comply with option two of the mandatory inclusionary housing program, which requires that 30% of the residential floor area serve households at average 80% of the area median income. Building A is proposed on the north side of 60th Street. Here's a site plan, on Block 5509, Lot 58. It would consist of a seven-story mixed use building. This building would contain approximately 8,000 square feet of ground floor commercial retail space and 28,000 square feet of residential space, for a total of 36,866 square feet of floor area or 4.6 FAR. The building would contain approximately 23 dwelling units, seven of which would be affordable, and the building would rise to a height of 75 feet. Building B is proposed to be a seven-story mixed use building, again, on the north side of 60th Street, on a 13,500 square foot zoning lot comprised of four tax lots. The building would contain approximately 10,600 square feet of ground floor retail space and 51,000 square feet of residential space on the upper floors, for a total of 62,000 square feet, which is 4.6 FAR. The building would contain 39 dwelling units, 13 of which would be affordable, and it would rise to a height of 75 feet. 15 accessory parking spaces would be located in the cellar level. And here is the site plan for building C, which is proposed to be an eight-story mixed use building on the south side of 60th Street, on a zoning lot of 13,586 square feet comprised of four tax lots. This building would contain approximately 13,600 square feet of ground floor commercial retail space and 49,000 square feet of residential space on the upper floors, for a total of 62,000 square feet of floor area or 4.6 FAR. The building would contain 40 dwelling units, 12 of which would be affordable, and it would rise to a height of 85 feet. 16 accessory parking spaces would be located in the cellar. In order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests two actions. First, a zoning map amendment would change an M11 district to an R7A district with the C24 commercial overlay. R7A districts permit a maximum FAR of 4.6 for residential uses when mapped with, with inclusionary housing. Buildings have a maximum base height of 75 feet and a maximum building height of 95 feet and nine stories above a required setback. Outside of the transit zone, 50% of the market rate units require parking, and 15% of income restricted units require parking. When mapped with an R7A district, C24 commercial overlays permit a maximum of 2 FAR for commercial uses. The second action that the applicant is seeking is a zoning text amendment to create a new mandatory inclusionary housing area, coterminous with the project area. This MIH area would include options one and two. Option one requires 25% of residential floor area to serve households with an average area median income of 60%. And option two requires that 30% of residential floor area serve households with an average area median income of 80%. For context, the median household income in Community District 12 is $44,591. In summary, these actions would facilitate the development of three new mixed use buildings containing approximately 102 dwelling units, 32 of which would be permanently affordable, and 32,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Thanks for the presentation. It would be great, when this comes back, if the developer could share their justification for wanting to do option two versus option one. One, because of the area median income you just shared, and also the, I mean, just looking at the data, it's, it's close to 60% of the people in the neighborhood are closer to the 60% of AMI and below versus 80% of AMI and below.
Commissioner Ron Prashad.
Two quick questions. With regards to this proximity to the Long Island Railroad, have they been in contact with them in terms of any required setbacks that may affect the design of building C?
I believe they have been in touch with them about making sure that the impact on the freight line is not impacted in any way, and they can speak to that more.
And the second question regards to light in there. On, on the same building C, it's a side lot for the first 100 feet, right, that you're allowed to do 20-foot rear yard of the shower lots?
Okay. Sorry, can you repeat that?
I just, no, I just want to confirm that the light in there complies?
Okay.
I think it does, but I'm just double checking this.
Can look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I have some questions and concerns with the overlay. And I'm not sure I understand the, the commercial overlay, the land use rationale for that, given the predominance of residential in that neighborhood on the ground floor. This is a mid-block location. 25,000 square feet is not insignificant, and what's already there seems to be underperforming vacancies and really non-retail uses. So I'd like to know, you know, what they envision, you know, and how that, just, I just don't see anything around there that would suggest that the ground floor makes sense for retail. So if they could speak to that and the, the context or the lack thereof for that kind of activity on the ground floor. And have they looked at ground floor residential, given the need for units, over a ground floor retail? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Reading from script today. Commissioner Deloos asks about neighborhood incomes. Commissioner Ortiz asks about ground floor commercial. And what part do I ask about? Why are we talking about an R7A district here when the R6A is immediately adjacent and where the area surrounding is so predominantly two and three story buildings?
I think the rationale that the applicant has provided for that particular density, yes, the R6A was mapped a while ago. And the rationale that they have proposed, one, is that the site is bounded by 60th Street, 15th Avenue, and 16th Avenue. They are all wide streets. This site in particular, these sites in particular, do have relatively close proximity to, to subway lines. So in terms of transit accessibility, it's, it's, it's not bad. And just given the kind of, you know, where this is located, the housing need is very strong. And so recognizing it is adjacent to an R5, 60th Street, while, you know, you could see to Commissioner Ortiz's point, it is residential in nature. It is kind of a highly trafficked east-west corridor, even though, you know, it doesn't have an overlay as of now. So it is kind of a more major thoroughfare than, you know, just a regular side street.
Okay. It'll be interesting-
But we'll ask the applicant to kind of, you know, explain the rationale.
Yeah, and I'll be interested also in what the community thinks about the, about the proposed density, how it fits into their vision for the place.
Commissioner Duick.
Just to concur with Commissioner Levin, I also don't understand the rationale for the R7A. Perhaps maybe on the south side, but certainly not on the north side. And absent of a borough president recommendation or community board, I'll keep my input, I'll keep it to myself till then.
Other questions? Well, then, since Commissioner Levin presaged this, I will let you know that when we, as a- a department, are preparing for this meeting, for these meetings, I'll frequently say, okay, I'm going to channel Commissioner Deloos, I'm going to channel Commissioner Ortiz. And with that, this application is certified.
The second item on the agenda, page 34, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District 8. Our presenter is Amy Jin.
This is an application returning for pre-hearing by EMP Capital for a zoning map amendment to rezone portions of two blocks from an M-1-1 district to an R-7D C-2-4 district, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use development with a total of 64 residential units, 16 of which would be permanently affordable, and commercial space on the ground floor. The project area is located in the Crown Heights neighborhood in Brooklyn, Community District 8. This application proposal is located in the M-Crown study area within the western mid-block mixed-use subarea highlighted in yellow. As part of the department's framework, these areas are identified as being able to support moderate mixed-use growth with slightly higher densities along the north-south corridors than in the mid-blocks shown in light yellow. The project area is located on the eastern corners of the Grand Avenue and Pacific Street intersection. The surrounding area contains a mix of parking, commercial, industrial, and auto-oriented uses, while the area is outside the M-1-zoned area is predominantly residential. M-1-1 is a manufacturing district that permits commercial and industrial uses to a maximum FAR of 1.0 and limited community facility uses to a maximum FAR of 2.4, while new residential use is not permitted as of right. Recent actions in the area include 1010 and 1050 Pacific Street, which were rezoned from N-1-1 to R-7A C-2-4 and M-1-4 R-7A respectively in the spring of 2019. The area is well-served by public transit, located less than a half-mile from a subway station at Fulton Street with access to the Sea Line and Franklin Avenue shuttle. Several bus routes run near the project area, including the B-65 one block to the south. Here's a bird's-eye view showing the project area outlined in orange, the development site shaded in red, and the recent rezoned areas of 1010 and 1050 Pacific are shaded in yellow. The project area consists of six tax lots, including the development site and approximately 10,000 square feet vacant lot, and five non-applicant-controlled sites south of Pacific Street consisting of a three-family residential building, a vacant building, and surface parking. This is a view of the development site looking northeast from Grand Avenue and Pacific Street. This is a view looking south on Grand Avenue. The development site is on the left and, oh, sorry, the development site is to the left, and then the four-story loft building on the right is the, is an existing parking This is a view looking west on Pacific Street with the development site on the right and the non-applicant-controlled sites to the left. The applicant proposes to develop a nine-story mixed-use building totaling 5.6 FAR with a base height of 60 feet, followed by a 10-foot setback at the sixth floor, then rising to a building height of 100 feet. The proposed development would contain 64 units, 16 of which would be designated affordable under Option 1 of the Mandatory Inclusionary Housing Program, which requires 25% of the residential floor area to be permanently affordable at or below 60% of the area median income, with 10% at or below 40% AMI. In addition, the proposal includes approximately 8,400 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. No parking is proposed for this project. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to rezone an M-1-1 district to an R-7D C-2-4 district over the eastern portions of Block 1125 and 1133. When mapped with an inclusionary housing area, R-7D allows a maximum FAR of 5.6 for residential uses and a maximum FAR, base and, sorry, a maximum base and building height of 90 feet and 110 feet respectively, which can be increased by five feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is generally required for 50% of the market rate dwelling units and optional for income-restricted housing units within the transit zone. C-2-4 is a commercial overlay that allows a range of local retail uses to a maximum FAR of 2.0. When paired with an R-7D district, the commercial overlay triggers a non-residential use requirement along the ground floor to a depth of 30 feet. Coming back to the M-Crown study, the department believes that the application is generally in line with the land use framework. Although Grand Avenue and Pacific Street are both 70 feet wide, the project area is located on the short ends of the blocks, which are 200 feet long, and the department believes are more appropriate for greater density compared to the mid-block sections fronting Pacific Street, which are 800 feet long. In addition, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment to create an MIH area with Options 1 and 2, coterminous with the rezoning area. According to the applicant, the proposal would facilitate new opportunities for affordable and market rate housing in an underutilized area while promoting density of mixed uses in an area well-served by public transit. On November 7, 2019, Community Board 8 held a public hearing, and at the full board meeting on November 11, 2019, recommended to disapprove the application with the following conditions: that the boundary of the area to be rezoned be limited to Block 1125, Lot 1, and if that is not possible, that the area to be rezoned south of Pacific Street be rezoned to R-7A C-2-4; that the applicant make a binding commitment to allocate at least 0.25 FAR of the commercial ground floor to M-Crown uses; that the applicant further commit to limiting the height of the proposed development to nine stories. CB-8 further states that there should, that should be, should the conditions in their resolutions not be met, they recommend the rezoning be amended to R-7A C-2-4. The Borough President's recommendations were received an hour before today's review session, so apologies if it's not included in the presentation, but the Borough President's recommendations echo that of the Community Board. So the Borough President recommends that the CPC and the City Council disapprove this application with the following conditions: that the zoning be changed to R-7A C-2-4 through the, though the City Council may, sorry, though the City Council may consider approving an R-7D district for the proposed rezoning area north of Pacific Street, provided that the applicant provides commitments in writing clarifying how it would make a binding commitment to allocate 0.25 FAR to M-Crown uses and include mechanisms for monitoring and enforcement, and that the applicant commit to limiting the height of the proposed development to nine stories. The Borough President further recommends that the applicant increase proportions of the two-to-three-bedroom units, support outreach efforts to assist senior households earning up to 50% AMI, recommend the applicant use locally-based nonprofits to serve as the administering agent, incorporate resiliency and sustainability measures, work with DOT for safety improvements along the adjacent sidewalk, and retain Brooklyn-based MWBS. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Dweck.
I'm looking forward to the applicant speaking to the recommendation of both the Community Board and the Borough President about the R-7A.
Commissioner Levin.
Is there a tenant identified for the ground-floor commercial space yet? Or do we know what kind of tenant the applicant is seeking?
I'm not sure at this moment, but I can get the applicant to respond to it.
Okay, then we will see this matter at a public hearing on Wednesday.
The third item on the agenda, page 63, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn, Community District 13. Our presenter is Colin Lee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And this is an application by Seabreeze Development LLC to request a zoning map amendment from an R-6 to an R-6 with the C-2-4 overlay to facilitate commercial use and allow the applicant to apply for a Board of Standard Appeals special permit for a physical, culture, or health establishment in an existing 20-story building at 271 Seabreeze Avenue. The project is located in the West Brighton neighborhood in Community District 13 in Brooklyn. The project area is bounded by West Brighton and Seabreeze Avenues and West Second and West Fifth Streets. Large multifamily residential buildings surround the project area to the north and the west, and to the east is mostly four-to-seven-story multifamily residential and mixed-use buildings. To the north along West Brighton Avenue are two schools and a playground, and to the south of Seabreeze Avenue is Asser Levy Park, New York Aquarium, the boardwalk, and the beach. Further to the east of the project area is West, excuse me, further to the east of the project area is the Brighton Beach Avenue Commercial Corridor, which contains local neighborhood retail services. And the surrounding area is well-served by public transportation with the Ocean Parkway Q and the West Eighth Street New York Aquarium F and Q subway stations, and also served by the B-1, B-36, and B-68 buses. Various land uses surround the project area, including residential, commercial, transportation utility, and several parks and open spaces, and the project area is also within the 1% chance flood zone. Zoning around the project area is, includes R-6, C-82, and the Special Ocean Parkway District. Further to the west is the Special Coney Island District, and the project falls within the R-6 district. And here are a few photos. On the left is a view northeast along Seabreeze Avenue, and on the right is a view east along West Brighton Avenue. And the project area consists of all the lots on Block 7280, shown here inside the yellow dash lines. Lots 89 and 110 are the development site inside the red dash lines. The development site's two tax lots are under separate ownership, but together are comprised of a single zoning lot. The proposed project is only on Lot 110 and will utilize the development rights on Lot 89. Lot 110 is currently under construction for a new 20-story as-of-right residential building with a community facility base, and there are two houses of worship that front Seabreeze Avenue on 89 and 92. Parking facilities are located on Lot 95, and a multifamily mixed-use building with the medical supply store on a portion of the ground floor is on Lot 188. The applicant's proposed to change the use of the existing 20-story building by adding a C-2-4 overlay. The applicant intend on converting the existing two floors of the community facility use to commercial use in a physical, culture establishment. The proposal would allow the development to change the site into a mixed-use building, replacing the community facility use on the first two floors with 25,000 square feet of commercial floor area. Development site would also have 130 off-street parking spaces and an attendant garage, and portions of the development would either be wet or dry floodproof. The site plan here shows entrances for commercial, community facility, residential, parking, and loading. Commercial entrances would be located primarily along West Brighton and a few on Seabreeze Avenue. The applicants are requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area with a C-2-4 commercial overlay. C-2-4 commercial overlays only permit non-residential ground-floor uses at a maximum FAR of two in the R-6 district, and one parking space for every 1,000 square feet of floor area. The Community Board held a public hearing on October 23 and voted on November 20 with 26 in favor and 1 abstaining. And the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on November 13 and recommended to approve with modifications and conditions. Those modifications and conditions include setting aside a portion of non-residential space for arts and culture entities or nonprofit organizations at below-market lease terms, setting aside a portion of the parking spaces for car-sharing operations within the parking garage, and to explore resilient and sustainable measures by incorporating rain gardens along the sidewalks of West Brighton and Seabreeze Avenues. And in order to facilitate the commercial use, the applicant is requesting to reown. Thanks.
Questions from the Commission. Okay, we'll see this out of public hearing on Wednesday.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 93, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn, Community District 10. Our presenter is San Matinak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Stars and Stripes for a zoning map amendment to facilitate the legalization of a non-conforming use of a one-story law office building. The site is located along 13th Avenue in Dyker Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn's Community District 10. The proposed, sorry, the proposed project, proposed project area includes three lots containing 10,000 square feet. The project proposed development is in red. It is a one-story commercial law office building. The adjacent two lots comprise a two-story two-family house. The existing R-5 zoning district does not allow commercial uses. The applicant is proposing the commercial overlay 1C13 in order to legalize the law office building. So the proposed C13 overlay would help facilitate the legalization of the law office building. Community Board 10 held a public hearing on this application and recommended approval by 37 in favor and 1 abstaining. Borough President held a public hearing and on December 18 recommended approval.
Questions from the Commission. Seems pretty straightforward. We'll see it at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 5 on the agenda, page 108, is a post-referral review of a non-ULP minor modification to restrictive DEC in Manhattan, Community District 2. And our presenter is Andy Cantu. Oh, I do not see. He's on his way down.
Maybe we should take things out of order?
Yeah, I'm trying to see who's here.
Apologies.
Yes, apologies. I will, I've texted the Manhattan office. Let's, I will jump then to the future votes for Wednesday, January 8. Staff have prepared reports for Bridge Park South mapping. 2260 46th Street rezoning. 18-17 130th Street SPD, SCPD special permit. 147-40th 15th Avenue commercial overlay rezoning in Queens. 2835 and 2845 Veterans Road West in Staten Island. The following items appeared on our agenda but are to be laid over: 70-seater terrace and 74-seater terrace, 18, 24, 28, Bedell Avenue, 29 and 31 Everton Avenue, 585 Lamont Avenue,
What's the story on the arrival?
There, on your way down. We're back to item 5, and this is page 108. It's a post-referral review of a non-ULP minor modification to restrictive declaration in Manhattan, Community District 2. Our presenter is Andy Cantu.
Good afternoon. Apologies for my tardiness. I expected you to ask more questions of the past two presentations, so this is a post-referral follow-up for an application that was referred out to Manhattan CB2 on October 28. So I'll be giving just a brief overview of the project itself, and then I'll go into the Community Board. the community board's recommendation. As you'll remember, this application is seeking to modify a restrictive declaration to allow a wider range of uses in the buildings located at 46 through 74 Ganzaboard Street in the Meatpacking District. The project area is bounded by Washington, Ganzaboard, Greenwich, and Horatio Streets in the block immediately southeast of the Whitney Museum and the southern terminus of the High Line. The project area is comprised of three separate zoning lots, improved with five market buildings constructed between the 1850s and the 1940s. The meat-related businesses, which operated here during most of the 20th century, ceased operations in the 1970s and 80s. All buildings on the property are undergoing major renovations and expansions pursuant to LPC approvals obtained in 2016 and 2017. This application is only related to use changes. No bulk waivers or modifications are being sought. This is a final elevation of the completed buildings with a site plan below. Once complete, the project will include a total of just under 100,000 square feet of floor area in five buildings ranging between one and six stories. The six-story building on the right is brand-new construction, while the others are primarily renovations and expansions. As of today, redevelopment has been completed on lots 54 and 49, the two on your left, and are fully leased to retailers and a restaurant. The two buildings on Lot 43, on your right, are almost complete. As you can see here on the land use map, the area to the south of the redevelopment site is more residential in character, while the area east and north of the site is generally more commercial, with most of the ground floors occupied by retail, eating and drinking uses, and galleries. Due to technological changes within the meatpacking industry and broader economic trends, the surrounding area has seen a substantial reduction in meat-related businesses and an increase in residential, retail, dining, arts and culture, office, hotel, and other commercial uses within the last several decades. All of the areas meat-related businesses are now concentrated at the Ganzaboard Market Meat Co-op located north of the Whitney. The project area is located at the nexus of manufacturing residential commercial zoning districts and M15 district, which are medium-density areas that typically allow a wide range of light industrial and commercial uses as-of-right, such as repair shops, wholesale service and storage facilities, offices, restaurants, and retail. The project site is adjacent to a C-6 to A district outlined in red, which was rezoned in 1984 from an N15 manufacturing district. The 1984 rezoning was intended to facilitate new residential development within the rezoned area. At the time, the environmental impact statement disclosed potential adverse impacts on land use, neighborhood character, and industrial meat production businesses. To mitigate those impacts, the Commission required restrictive declarations on several properties, both inside and outside of the rezoning area, excuse me, in an effort to help preserve the meat industry. Although the project site was not within the rezoned area, a restrictive declaration was recorded against the project site to limit the permitted uses. The restrictive declaration placed on the property required that it be used only for specific commercial and light manufacturing uses in use groups 11, 16, 17, and 18, such as slaughterhouses and workshops. As the land uses and the character of the surrounding neighborhood evolved and diversified away from its industrial roots, the restrictive deck has been modified twice since 1984. In 1998, the Commission approved a very limited expansion of the permitted uses on Lot 54 at the corner of Ganzaboard and Greenwich to include Use Group 6, which contains retail, restaurant, and local services uses. In 2003, the Commission further approved a modification permitting Use Groups 6 and 9 on the entire project area to allow for an expanded range of business and commercial services. The Commission's approval was subsequently modified by City Council to further exclude Use Group 6B office uses, eating and drinking establishments with entertainment uses, and eating and drinking establishments of any type in rear yards or on the roof. Bringing us to the subject of this application, which is to remove the prohibition on Use Group 6B office uses and allow community facility uses in Use Groups 3 and 4 that are permitted as-of-right in M15 districts. The prohibition on eating and drinking establishments with entertainment uses and eating and drinking establishments in rear yards or on the roof would remain in effect. This application was referred by the Commission on October 28th to Manhattan Community Board 2, who considered it at their December 19th meeting. The community board's concerns centered on three major themes. The first was the lack of affordable space in the district for small businesses and nonprofits, quality of life concerns, including increased noise, foot traffic, trash, straight-on local infrastructure, et cetera. And third concerns just about the size and the scale of the development, even though it is as-of-right from the zoning standpoint and approved by the LPC. The CB voted unanimously to deny the application unless certain stipulations were agreed to that they felt would help mitigate these concerns. Ultimately, the applicant has agreed to meet all of the community board's conditions. The community board and the applicant have agreed to take certain steps to mitigate the community's concerns, and these points will be memorialized in a separate private restrictive declaration distinct from the restrictive deck that the Commission is being asked to modify with this application. This is a site agreement outside of the Commission's purview that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to place on their land. As noted in the letter in your briefing package, the applicant has agreed to all conditions noted in CB2's resolution, including placing limits on liquor licenses, restricting how much the building's design can deviate from approved plans, prohibiting transfer of development rights to 803 Washington, which is a residential building immediately south of the project that the applicant does not control, implement steps to mitigate any potential nuisances caused by noise or visual obstructions, and they've also agreed to provide space at free or reduced rents to local arts-related service organizations, 1,800, excuse me, square feet onsite and 4,000 square feet offsite. To recap, this application is requesting to remove the prohibition on Use Group 6P office uses and allow community facility uses in Use Groups 3 and 4 permitted by the underlying M15 zoning. The existing prohibition on eating and drinking establishments with entertainment uses and eating and drinking establishments in rear yards or on the roof would remain in the amended restrictive declaration. No public hearing is required, and this was not referred to the Borough President, but the proposed modification requires Commission and City Council approval. I am happy to take any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Vellows.
Do we have any idea of the timetable for the site agreement?
I understand that the applicant and the CB are still in active negotiations, definitely before the City Council votes on it, is my understanding.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Sharing perhaps the same line of thought, since the letter from Aurora to the community board indicates that that separate restrictive declaration will be finalized prior to the conclusion of the public review process, should we hold off on our vote? And recognizing that this still goes to the City Council, I think, I mean, for me, it's important to know that the condition that applies to this has been fulfilled before we vote. What is the agency's thought on timing of our vote?
The vote scheduled for the 20-second, correct?
Is there a ULP clock on this one?
There is no clock on this.
There's no clock on this one.
The other thing I would note is that these are not modifications, these are not included in our restrictive deck. I would note that this has been an applicant that has been particularly responsive to the community board.
Yeah, no, that certainly appears to be the case, but.
Sorry. I'll note that, you know, the applicant intends to also provide opportunity for City Council when it's reviewing the application to participate in these conversations, so it might not be realistic to memorialize the restrictions in the side restrictive deck before the Commission's vote.
Good save. Good save. Other questions? Okay, then we will schedule this for our vote so that it can get on to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Item six on the agenda, page 227, is a post-referral review of a non-ULP minor modification to a previously approved special permits and restrictive declaration in Manhattan, Community District 5. Our presenter is Allison Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by OAC 550 Owner LLC for a modification to a previously approved special permit and modification to restrictive declaration in order to facilitate the redesign of a CPS or covered pedestrian space located at 550 Madison Avenue in Manhattan, Community District 5. This application was referred to Community Board 5 on December 2nd of 2019. Today, I will respond to questions raised at the previous review session and also discuss the community board's resolution. 550 Madison, completed in 1984, is outlined in red on the area map and is bounded by Madison Avenue, East 55th Street, East 56th Street. The project site is within the Special Midtown District's East Midtown Subdistrict. The surrounding area is a high-density commercial central business district. The landmark building has a lot area of about 36,000 square feet. So the site features a 37-story building seen here, ground-floor retail, arcades along the 56th Street frontage, which we see here, and the 55th Street frontage on the other side, covered pedestrian space seen here, and an annex, which is a four-story structure which includes back-of-house space, loading bays, retail spaces which front onto the CPS, and public restrooms. It recently held an exhibition space, which was recently operated as the Sony Wonder This chart shows the bonus square footage of the arcade and the covered pedestrian space. The top line here shows the maximum allowable floor area bonus for the lot. So this is the lot size with a multiplier of 3 FAR, which is about 110,000 square feet. The second line shows the bonus for the 10,000-square-foot covered pedestrian space, which totals 111,000 square feet, which is already more than the maximum amount allowable. The bottom line shows the bonus generated from the 3,500-square-foot arcade. So we can see that while the arcade would have generated a bonus, only floor area generated by the covered pedestrian space was utilized on the site. As the arcade bonus was never utilized, it was not a bonus, it's not considered a bonus amenity. Little more information about the history of the arcades. The building's public spaces have evolved over time in connection with a series of modifications intended to activate and improve the arcades and the CPS. Philip Johnson, who designed the building, commented that his original design with the arcades were unutilized. On the left, we see the ground floor plan showing the original arcades on the site. The arcades shown in green, as you can see, they were quite expansive. While the arcades were once a prominent architectural feature of the original design, they proved to be unwelcoming, dark, and unfriendly. The photo shows the condition of the arcade along East 55th Street looking west, which is along this side. And here we see the arcades today, which, as you can see, remain dark and unwelcoming. So here we have the existing POPS on the left and the proposed on the right. The orange is the two arcade spaces fronting onto East 55th Street and East 56th Street, and the green is the covered pedestrian space. The white, shown at the top here, is the four-story annex, which described previously. On the right, the applicant is proposing to redesign the space, removing the enclosure around the covered pedestrian space and removing the two non-bonus arcades from the site completely, providing 11,000 square feet of public access area by pulling back the bounding wall of the annex and reducing the height of the annex to one story with a green roof. The public access area, or PAA, is the pink areas in the illustration on the right. The darker pink is occupiable area, that is, area landscape to be walked upon with seating and other amenities, while the light pink is not occupiable by pedestrians but is a green space with landscaping and trees on top of the one-story annex structure. So the proposed covered pedestrian space is the same size as the existing covered pedestrian space, but there will be a net loss of 437 square feet of occupiable public space due to the removal of the arcades. Overall, there would be a gain in public access area and green space, and the overall pop size would result in 21,000 square feet. Here we see a great view of the proposed annex and green roof. So this entire landscaped area here is the future of that annex area. The green roof would be clearly visible but not accessible by visitors to the space. The underneath this area is where loading areas and parking is located, as well as the public restrooms mentioned previously. So on the side, we can see just the general increase in public amenities to the space. There's an increase in planting, including 47 trees, an increase in seats and tables, a doubling of the public restrooms provided, and as well as increase in bike racks. Much of the increase in planting is attributed to the space on the first-floor rooftop, as mentioned before. The space also collects and retains rainwater. The building is designed to be lead-platinum by the USGBC. The applicant verified, in response to Commission's comments previously, that they looked into allowing pedestrian access on the roof, but ultimately decided that, given the height, the grading that would be required to make the space accessible would significantly reduce the amount of planting that could be provided. So here, just a few comparison before-and-after images. Again, we can see what is today the four-story annex compared to the one-story structure with green roof, the opening of what is currently an enclosed covered pedestrian space. The space will remain covered for the portion that is meant for, through public traffic, but this portion will remain, will be uncovered to allow rainwater to reach the plantings. And then, this is the same view again, but now from 56th Street. We see a little bit more of the proposed retail to infill what is existing arcades. So in order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a modification to a special permit and a restrictive declaration associated with previously granted special permits to reconfigure the covered pedestrian space. In order to grant such actions, the Commission shall find that the proposed design is in keeping with the findings and conditions of the previous special permit. These findings include, but are not limited to, dimensional requirements such as the covered pedestrian space having an area not less than 3,000 square feet, a minimum width of 20 feet, and a minimum height of 30 feet, that the CPS has appropriate uses such as small stores and cafes occupying the frontages of the covered pedestrian space, that the space is found to be adequately illuminated, utilizing natural daylight wherever possible, and that the space ensures prominent public attention to the covered pedestrian space at the openings. Sorry, actually, one more note on this. So of course, included in the Commission's briefing package is the full discussion of conditions and findings. In addition to these actions, the owner is also seeking a chairperson certification for elimination of non-bonus open area on a zoning lot containing a bonus amenity, in this instance for the removal of the arcades. This application was referred to Community Board 5 on December 2nd. Community Board 5 issued a resolution of approval of the application on December 13th. CB5 commended the design of the POPS, a sentiment which was echoed by many members of the public who attended Community Board 5's public hearing on December 4th. Community Board 5's primary concern was the programming of the space. Pursuant to the existing restrictive declaration, the owner is permitted to close the POPS on 12 occasions for private events. The owner wishes to activate the POPS The owner wishes to activate the POPs with public programming from time to time in addition to these private closures. The community board is concerned with the trend of commercialization in public space in Community District Five and has requested a prohibition of markets or other revenue-generating events. The commission was provided a copy of a letter sent from the applicant to Community Board Five outlining ownership's commitment to prohibiting markets in the proposed covered pedestrian space. The department supports allowing temporary activation of the space. The modified restrictive declaration proposes language which ensures that events are limited in time, must be free and open to the public, and must allow the public to continue to use the covered pedestrian space throughout the event duration. The commission was provided with a letter of support from Councilmember Keith Powers. DCP staff is also just this morning in receipt of a letter of unconditional support from Borough President Gail Brewer, copies of the letter with me that I'll leave with Ryan. Are there any questions at this time?
Questions from the commission. Okay, then what I would ask... Oh, I'm sorry. Return your hand, okay. And in this instance, it's an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the Department of Buildings about the minor modification to the previously approved special permit and restrictive declaration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven on the agenda, page 279, is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment, or city map amendments, multiple of them, in Bronx Community District Six. Our presenter is Philip Montgomery.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Returning for a pre-hearing review are two applications by the New York City Department of Transportation, Division of Bridges, seeking amendments to the city map. The proposed amendments involve the modification of legal grades on East 175th Street and East 180th Streets at Park Avenue. This is in the Belmont neighborhood of the Bronx Community District Six. The proposed amendments would facilitate the rehabilitation of two bridges spanning over four lines of the Metro North Railway. The East 175th Street Bridge was built in 1889 and reconstructed in 1938. The subject portion of East 175th Street is city-owned, mapped to a width of 60 feet, and is approximately 200 feet in length. The street profile will be raised approximately 1 foot with a change in legal grade of 2 The East 180th Street Bridge was also built in 1889 and rehabbed in both 1905 and 1936. The subject portion of East 180th Street is city-owned, mapped to a width of 80 feet and is approximately 350 feet in length. This profile is being raised approximately 1 foot with a change in legal grade of 1 1/2 feet. Construction on both bridges is set to begin in January of 2021. Construction of the East 175th Street Bridge is expected to last 19 months, while construction of the East 180th Street Bridge is expected to last 27 months. Community Board Six did not hold a vote on the applications, and the Borough President approved both applications. And lastly, I wanted to make the commission aware that as part of the overall project scope, the East 169th Street Bridge over Metro North will also be rehabilitated but does not require any city map changes. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item eight on the agenda, page 288, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in the Bronx Community District 10, and our presenter is Christine Camilleri.
Good afternoon. This is an application submitted by the New York City Department of City Planning that was certified on September 23. And as a reminder, the department seeks approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone privately-owned sites within an area that includes Block 5141, Lots 101, 102, and a small portion of Lot 110. And the application proposes a district change from C7 to C82. The proposed rezoning area is located in the northeastern Bronx within Community District 10 in the neighborhood of Baychester. And here is an aerial view of the proposed rezoning area shown in red, as well as the surrounding area. Baychester Avenue is directly to the west. That is the service road to the I-95 and New England Thruway. Bartow Avenue is to the south. That is a wide street occupied by large, single-story and two-story retailers, and Co-op City is to the north. Here's a closer view of the proposed rezoning area, which measures approximately 49,000 square feet. Lots 101 and 102 front on Bartow Avenue and are improved with commercial uses. There is the small portion of Lot 110, measures about 3,000 square feet and is unimproved. That's the northernmost sliver of the proposed rezoning area. This is a land use map that really reflects to the east and west along Bartow Avenue that it is commercial uses concentrated on this corridor. And here are some photos of the rezoning area and surrounding area. And the requested actions, the requested action is a zoning map amendment. The existing zoning today is C7, and a change from C7 to C82 is proposed to better align with the current and future land uses in the area and to better serve community needs. C7 districts are specifically designated for large, open amusement parks, and in the 1960s, this area was the location of Freedom Land USA, which was an 85-acre amusement park that was demolished in 1965. And in the years that followed, this area, the surrounding area, was redeveloped as part of Co-op City. And it is the last remaining C7 district in the city outside of Coney Island, and the C7 district zoning designation has remained intact, though it does not match the built context and has not for a long time. And so the department considered a number of factors in considering an appropriate district change. Those included the existing land use, built context, and applicable provisions. And the change to C82 is proposed because it will permit the active commercial uses that are on-site today, as well as applying more appropriate provisions to the area. And the application, again, was certified on September 23 and referred to Bronx Community Board 10, as well as the Bronx Borough President. Bronx Community District 10 voted to approve the application with 25 votes in favor, four against, and with one abstention. The four votes against pertain to some concerns that arose during the public hearing related to some of the semi-industrial uses that could be permitted as a right in the C82 district. Our office, a few weeks ago, had a chance to meet with Co-op City's leadership and to discuss these uses, and we explained that, given the site and market conditions, that the uses they were most concerned about would be unlikely to displace the active commercial uses that have occupied the site for a long time. And we also explained that the C82 district was identified in large part because it seemed most aligned with the historic and current uses and the least likely commercial district to induce change. But Bronx Borough President held a public hearing and voted to approve the application as well. And in summary, the Department of City Planning proposes a zoning map change from C7 to C82, and I'll pause now for questions.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Eadie.
Thank you. I mean, this is pretty straightforward. Just a quick question as to why this was a departmental action as opposed to a private action body.
Sure. Yeah, we've been aware for some time that this district really doesn't match the current or future historic land use patterns. We became aware of potential support, you know, for this action during a previous public review for an application close by, and I agreed to take it on. We were happy to take on updating the zoning as we became aware of that support. Correct, yeah.
And it was relatively straightforward, involved relatively few resources of the department, and we now have C7 mapped where we want it mapped.
Right, that's right.
Other questions? Please, Jerk Knuckles.
Was a private owner a private citizen, or is this a part of the Co-op City cooperative?
Sure. So Lot 102 and Lot 1...
Go back to that slide.
Yes, sure. Is this slide helpful, because it shows the tax map? So the two red, the lots 101 and 102 are shown in red here are two distinct private owners. The small sliver of Lot 110 that's unimproved is owned by River Bay Corporation, which is Co-op City's managing entity.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then we'll have a public hearing on Wednesday.
Item nine, page 308, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Scott Solomon. And Commissioner Ramon Bishatich recused on this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm just gonna wait till that pops up on the screen here.
Yeah, it's coming up. There we go.
6411 QB Owner LLC requests a zoning text amendment to map two MIH areas on two distinct project areas located a half-mile from each other in the Woodside and Mazbeth neighborhoods in Queens District Two. The proposed text amendment is requested to facilitate the development of two new mixed-use buildings on two corresponding development sites, resulting in a total of 218 dwelling units, of which approximately 56 to 65 would be permanently affordable under MIH, and also includes ground-floor retail. No other actions are requested. The surrounding areas, Project Area 1 to the west, Project Area 2 to the east, are both characterized by a mix of mixed-use buildings fronting Queens Boulevard and lower-density residential on the side streets. The project areas we re-zoned are 7X-C23 in 2006, also including the borough's first voluntary inclusionary housing district. This resulted in a maximum base FAR of 3.75 residential FAR and a maximum 5.0 when using IH voluntary inclusionary housing. In 2018, 6902 Queens Boulevard rezoning was approved just to the west of Project Area 2, which results in approximately 561 dwelling units. The project areas are well-served by public transit. Project Area 1 is a quarter-mile south from the 61st Street Station on the 7 Line, is within the transit zone. Project Area 2 is not within the transit zone but is served by local and express bus Project Area 2 includes block fronts between 70th Street and 73rd Street on the southern side of Queens, excuse me, on the northern side. Sorry, I got a, that was on my development site, too. My apologies. Project Area 1 is located between 64th Street and 65th Place, fronting the northern side of Queens Boulevard, totaling approximately 48,000 square feet. Development Site 1 is currently vacant. This outdated photo shows the prior tenant, a one-story mortel, since it's been demolished and is currently just surrounded with construction fence. Here are photos of the project area with the development side on the left, pivoting to the east on the photo on the right, looking southerly from the north with larger mixed-use buildings on the northern, excuse me, the southern side of Queens Boulevard. Project Area 2 includes the block fronts between 70th Street and 73rd Street on the southern side of Queens Boulevard, totaling approximately 91,000 square feet. Project Area 2 includes, from east to west, several auto use sales going west to an existing mixed-use building currently under construction, fronting Queens Boulevard. Above are photos of the development site on the left, looking at development site from the south looking north. Again, of the development site looking south on the left, looking north on the right. Development Site 1, in terms of the proposed development, is a 13-story mixed-use building containing 140 dwelling units, 1,600 square feet of ground-floor retail, and approximately 75 permitted parking spaces accessory to both residential and commercial uses. 35 to 42 dwelling units would be subject to MIH, depending on option 1 or 2, which are both being proposed, being mapped. The building would have residential FAR of 5.92 and a commercial FAR of .08. Development Site would have a building height of 135 feet. Development Site 2 is a proposed 12-story mixed-use building with 78 residential dwelling units and 5,000 square feet of ground-floor retail. The site is not in transit zone. Again, 20 to 23 dwelling units would be permanently affordable, and 32 parking spaces accessory to both uses would be provided. The building would have residential FAR of 5.51 and a commercial FAR of .39. Above, you'll see that the site plan or axometric drawings prior that were certified, subsequent referral, the community board had asked that both development sites remove aggregate parking. Here, the applicant is now changed, updated the plans to move the parking, maintain the amount of parking, but move it to the garage. This would be privately-owned, publicly-accessible space, takes the sort of barrier just crossing from Queens Boulevard to 47th Avenue, will be open to walk-through. They are not proposing to change the aggregate parking in the rear of the building in Project Area 1 to the west. To facilitate the proposed development, again, MIH is proposed to be mapped, two MIH areas, Project MIH Area 2 and 3 to the west, 3 to the east. They're proposing to map both 1 and 2, with preference to provide, under option 2, the higher amount of units, 30% of units at, or 30% of floor area at 80% AMI. Subsequent to certification, December 5, community board adopted a resolution recommending approval, 26 in favor, 2 opposed. The 2 generally were expressing concern about general overdevelopment of this neighborhood. But of the buildings that are fronting Queens Boulevard within the R7X, that are within the IH districts, they're all being currently built under the 3.75 base FAR, not utilizing any FAR under the voluntary program. This proposal provides incentive to produce more FAR but providing required affordable housing in perpetuity. Again, their stipulation was to relocate the aggregate parking, and they have committed to so on the eastern site. Since certification, they partnered with HANIC with preliminary agreement to become their administrating agent for the affordable units. They've had progressive conversations with union labor for both maintenance and construction. They're prepared to speak on that on Wednesday. Again, the Queens Borough President is currently vacant and had waived her, well, it's no one now, their hearing. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Capelli.
I'm just disturbed by the notion that because the office is vacant, that there's no recommendation from the Queens Borough President's office. I mean, somebody must be acting Borough President at the moment.
Yeah.
That doesn't eliminate the office's responsibility to respond to this.
And I will point out that the Borough President was still in office during the review period.
So I'm not sure how we got that as a response.
We can follow up, and we will accept the Borough President's recommendation and add it to the file.
Okay, thank you.
It's interesting. We sometimes see community boards not submitting recommendations. To my knowledge, during my tenure, this is the first time we haven't had a Borough President recommendation. At times, they haven't come in by the date of the review session, but we accept them at any point prior to our vote. Commissioner Deloos.
During the community board process, did the AMI levels at all come up in the discussion? And certainly, I'd like the developer to let the hearing speak to that.
Yeah, although it's not stipulated in the conditions, there was a conversation whether or not this is appropriate AMI. The AMI for, so something I should point out, the project area to the west is within, they're both within Community District 2, but one's in two different council districts, two different constituencies. The AMI for CD2 is 71,000. The AMI for a family of three at 80% is approximately 76,000. So it's around the ballpark, but there was concern that maybe option 1 was more appropriate on the western side, but not so on the eastern side. 6902, that was approved previously, utilized option 2.
And again, we can pose those questions to the applicant team on Wednesday. Other questions? Okay, so this will be the final item for the public hearing on Wednesday. Okay, so this will be the final item for the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, since we have already discussed the future votes, we will move on to our post-hearing follow-up and a decision that is scheduled for January 21st on the Go-Broom Street development. Matthew Pietrus is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. So this is a follow-up from the post-hearing, which was in December. So we're going to talk about four different things that you should have in your materials, a letter from the applicant. The first one is the Community District Three AMI, which the applicant just wanted to follow up with and give exact figures. So that's shown here on the right. So it's between about 40,000 and 48,000. I'll just note that per city planning, our population division standards for statistical significance, the six-person family household is not significant, but the other, the other figures are. And so this represents around 40 to 50% AMI throughout the city, depending on the household size of the family. Are there any questions on this before moving on? Great. So next, there was a question about the density on the site, so the dwelling units per acre. So the size of the entire block is 1.39 acres, or about 60,000 square feet. It consists of two zoning lots. And so the existing units is 181, so the Hongning Building has 156, and 384 Grand Street has 25. And the proposed units that would be part of this project are 488, which gives a total 481 units per acre. Both of these will be compliant with zoning, so there's a permitted 708 dwelling units that would be allowed on the proposed zoning lot, and then 92 that would be permitted at 384 Grand, so both of those would be compliant. Are there any questions here? Great. Okay, so moving on to, these next two are related to design. The first is the distance between buildings, specifically the distance between the Norfolk Building, which is the building with the heirs' units, and the existing Hongning Building. So this is, I'm starting with the previous condition on the site. So on the left of the screen, that's the Beth Hamerdash Hagadal Synagogue, which previously existed and has since been raised. And on the right, that's the existing Hongning Building, which is there. And so this is a compliant condition because these are two separate zoning lots, and the distance between building requirements don't come into effect until you have multiple buildings on the same zoning lot. And so this is a condition that existed before and was compliant. And a couple slides, we'll see the proposed is a very similar condition here.
And what's that distance?
This is about 12 feet, yeah. So here are two other examples that are as-of-right. They're also on two separate zoning lots. So these are in the neighborhood, 702nd Avenue. We see there's a much smaller distance here. And then 69 Clinton, there's a little bit bigger than 702nd. These are between, I believe it's like two and eight feet or so. But these are just to show that this condition does exist throughout the city and in the neighborhood. Where the distance between buildings regulations come into effect is when you have multiple buildings on the same zoning lot. And so here's an example from Fordham University. So if you, in your, in your materials, on page 25 and 26, that's where the CPC, at the time, talks about their considerations for this. And so the required distance here is 40 feet, and what was approved was 18 feet. And in this case, the Commission found that this does create, there's sufficient distance here for light and air, and it helps to accommodate a better site plan. And also, this fence, which is at the bottom, is transparent, and the Commission was noting here, they wanted to see a nice depth to the lot. And here, they viewed this interior space as somewhat of a pocket park, and so that it did extend the sidewalk and also didn't create this, didn't disconnect the sidewalk visually. Here is a rendering of the proposed fence and that distance between buildings for the proposed development. So we can see the woman in red and her companion in white at the bottom right corner, and behind them is that fence. And so we see here that this condition is similar to what existed at Fordham, where you can see back into the landscaped area and the open space, and that this condition is very similar to what previously existed on the site and also exists throughout the neighborhood and the city. Are there any questions here before moving on to the massings? Great. So the last thing we'll talk about today is massing under the R8. There was a desire to see what would exist under zoning. There isn't an as-of-right option technically here because it is within a large scale. And so there are a few assumptions that were made. One for the EIS, the no action was considered with, the no action is the existing condition because nothing could happen without any actions. And so while this isn't fully analyzed in the EIS, this is the massings that are shown with an R8. So on the far left, we see the proposed development. So it rises 310 feet on the Suffolk Building, 165 on the Norfolk Building, has an 85-foot podium along Broom Street. And then in the middle, we see the quality housing zoning. So this assumes that there is a minor modification on the site, as well as the zoning text amendment goes through to allow quality housing to apply. Here, we see the building rises 85 feet with a podium and then comes up to 115 feet. And on the far right, we see the height factor zoning, which just assumes a minor modification to the LSRD. So we see an 85-foot podium with 105 feet as the maximum building height. A couple of things to note for these, these massings is, one, I think the most pressing and the most significant is this change in total units. So we see in the proposed development, we have 488 units, 93 of which would be dedicated for MIH, and then 115 would be affordable to seniors. And then in both the quality housing and the height factor zoning options, all of the affordable units do go away. And then we see a significant reduction of over 350 units in the quality housing, massing, and then over 370 in the height factor zoning. Also here, the assumption is that the Beth Hamerdash Hagadal Site, which is shown, which is where the Norfolk Building will be, actually would no longer be part of this project because it is only currently encumbered by Landmarks Preservation Commission designation. And to then add it into the, to merge the zoning lots and then to add it to the LSRD adds another level of procedural, procedure to go through to develop. And so it's assumed that in both of these options, that that merge would not happen. And so what would develop there would be a building that is completely market-rate units, but it would not be part of this project. Are there any questions on these? There's one more slide after this. Sure.
Not a question, but an observation. I think it was really helpful to see this analysis, and thank you for making it happen. Thanks to the developer for putting it together, even though it comes with lots of conditions about why it's not realistic. I think it does give us a clear picture of the choice we make. You know, the trade-offs in terms of land use in, toward the goal of producing affordable housing. It's just good to have the visual representation of what we're up to here. So thank you.
And last, so this is also in your materials. This is a figure that is in the applicant's response to the community board recommendation. So this is showing a lower height study alternative. So on the left, we see, this is the Suffolk Building from Suffolk Street, and so we're looking at 310 feet. We have this articulation on the left side of the building here, where the building sets back. And on the right, we see that articulation go away, and then this building just becomes compliant under the R91 zoning. But then it becomes a more rectangular building. You also lose some amenity space for the private residents, who would, this would be utilized as open space there for them. And so we just kind of see that, in meeting the requirements of the program that the applicants want to achieve throughout this program, while also maintaining the maximum height, the building just gets a little more square. Great. That's all I have.
Yeah, we think that that covers all of the issues that had come up at the public hearing in the prior review. And this one is, yes, Commissioner Levin.
Well, I have a related issue, and that comes out of my reading of the letter that was included in our materials. It's from the applicant team to the CB3 Land Use and Zoning Committee, the one dated December 23rd. And sort of, they're laying out the argument for, the community board was pressing for 50% of the total units in the project to be affordable, and the applicant is providing an analysis that indicates why that's challenging. First off, I would say, I do worry about the affordability levels, particularly in the Norfolk Building, about whether it is going to be achievable for them to find low-income tenants at the higher ends of the range that they've laid out here. I think the information we have suggests that the real need in the neighborhood is at the very lower ends of the income range. That's probably beyond our, it is beyond our work here. But it's something that I very much hope the council will take a look at and perhaps make some adjustments so that we're sure that the units here really meet neighborhood need. That's an aside, only triggered by my reading this letter. But where I'm going with this is being sure that the community facility space that's here, which the applicant argues is a significant public benefit, justifying the increase in density here, among other things, be permanently restricted to community facility space. So I'm speaking particularly of, and specifically of, the space that will be allocated to CPC's new headquarters. It's a great thing for them to be consolidating and modernizing their space. But also to the former BHH site, which is designated as community facility space. I was struck by the fact that we didn't hear from anybody for the synagogue at the public hearing. I know that that congregation has been under significant duress from a whole variety of sources, not least fire, but also demographic change. And this does look like it is a market rate transaction between the synagogue and the developer. And it strikes me that that community facility, the prospect that that space will indeed be used for community facility space is somewhat vulnerable. But since the developer is asking for a pretty significant increase in density and citing those two community facility spaces as public benefits that in part justify this zoning change, I want to be sure that they really will be community facility, community facility space and can't be converted to another market rate use in the future. So, I mean, we know that the heirs' spaces and the MIH units are permanently, permanently have that designation as a result of zoning. But I want to be sure that the community facility space is permanently protected by the conditions of the special permit.
That's understood. I will note here, too, that if it were to convert to commercial space, that it would continue to support BHH, it just may not be as a, as a physical space for them to occupy.
Yeah, but the owner, I mean, it is important to this community that that, that there be a community facility presence—
Absolutely.
—in addition to dollars in the bank.
Understood.
Other comments? Okay, then, this, we will, this is scheduled, or will be scheduled for a vote on the 21st.
Thank you.
Continuing on to post-hearing follow-ups, Allison Brown is here to discuss Lennox Terrace.
Good afternoon, Ann. So, Lennox Terrace. Today is the first of two post-hearing follow-up sessions scheduled for Lennox Terrace. Here you can see the tentative agenda for both days. Today, January 6th, we propose to cover the applicant-proposed changes to the application in regards to the zoning district and to the site plan. These are changes put forth in reaction to feedback the applicant has heard from the Commission and the public. Then we will cover items of concern that were raised at the public hearing, again, from both the Commission and the public. And at the end, I'll have Susan Amron join me to discuss the Voting Rights Act testimony provided by Community Board 10. So first, the applicant is proposing changes to the zoning district. The applicant previously proposed to rezone Lennox Terrace from an R7 with an C14 overlay to a C62 zoning district. In response to concerns raised by the Commission and the public of the appropriateness of this proposed zoning district, the applicant now proposes to modify the application to an R8 district with a to-be-determined commercial overlay. This would allow for the same residential FAR that would be permitted in the C6 district, but would limit the commercial FAR to what exists on the site today. It would also limit commercial uses to those that serve the local community. Secondly, the applicant is also proposing a modification of the previously proposed site plan, which would retain the historic cul-de-sac entrance to Building 470, which we see here, and provides new development in the footprint of the existing one-story commercial retail that exists on the site today. The change also would eliminate the proposed six-story building, which was previously proposed, along Lennox Avenue. It would eliminate the proposed sky bridges, and it would require one less additional curb cut. The proposed change would eliminate the need for a distance between buildings waiver, which was currently requested as part of the bulk special permit. So to recap, overall, the proposed changes put forth by the applicant today would result in a change to the proposed action for the Commission's consideration. The proposed zoning map change, special permit for bulk waivers, and the authorization to modify curb cuts would all be modified. Are there any questions at this time about the applicant's proposed changes before I continue?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. For those of you who are aware that I was not here, I did watch this, every bit of it on, on— No, no, on, livestream, livestream.
And it's up for an award. Best supporting actor.
Yeah. You'll get more than the Irishman who got none yet, for some reason, I'm surprised. Could you go back to the rendering?
This, the site plan? Or?
No, the, yeah, that one.
Great.
Well firstly, I, I would commend the developer for the proposal to reopen the area around 470 Lennox, because I think, for many people in the community, 470, despite being one of, you know, several buildings, was always the face of Lennox Terrace because of its prominence along Lennox Avenue. So I think that's, that's a good move. And I also think that, you know, recreating, as, as the open space does, the, the grid that was 132nd Street, 133rd Street, and respectively 134th Street is good. However, this massing closes off what would be the 134th Street corridor between Lennox and Fifth. And I'm wondering if they could not reconsider that, because I think the proposal to open this up to the rest of the community as thoroughfares, Lincoln House, the Lincoln housing residence on Fifth Avenue to the east, as well as the residence to the west across Lennox Avenue, would then have the opportunity to go, to traverse the site east and west. But if you're coming east and you encounter this massing, as is proposed, it kind of blocks off what would be the natural thoroughfare of 134th Street. So I think that ought to be reconsidered.
Okay, thank you very much for this thoughtful comment. I will bring this back to the applicant team, and on the 21st, when I return, I will provide a response.
The 2.0 FAR for C2 would not, would that, that would not preclude a second-floor commercial, or would it?
No, so the, the proposed commercial overlay for local retail, so the possibilities are a C1 overlay as what exists today, or a C2 overlay. Those are just the two commercial overlays that are available. They both limit the commercial FAR to two. That commercial FAR would only be utilized on the ground floor, not on the second story.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions before I continue? Okay, so the next couple slides speak to questions and comments raised during the public hearing. hearing. So the commission raised a question in regards to curb cuts. This slide is to simply clarify what the applicant is really requesting with this authorization. The application is, would be increasing the total number of curb cuts at the site from 11 to 16. This is a net increase of five curb cuts. They are proposing two curb cuts on the primary streets surrounding the, the site. All street frontages added up, the 135th, Fifth, 132nd, and Lennox Avenue is 2,000, over 2,500 feet. So they're adding two curb cuts on this, on the total surrounding streets. And they're proposing three on Lennox Terrace Place, which is a map street, but an interior street that dead-ends within the site and is felt that it would not disrupt pedestrian traffic along the main streets, placing more curb cuts on Lennox Terrace Place. In regards to the surrounding heights, the question was raised at the commission. Shown here are the approximate heights of surrounding buildings. These proposed, or these approximate heights include mechanicals. The proposed 285 feet, or 284 feet, rather, of the proposed Lennox Terrace buildings includes mechanicals. The applicant is capping themselves with mechanicals. So for the purpose of comparison, these buildings also, they're including the mechanicals in the heights. I will simply note that, you know, heights in this slide range reaching up to 200 feet, as we see at the Savoy Apartments to the north. Not shown in this slide are other buildings in the greater Harlem area, such as 410 St. Nicholas Avenue, which is located between West 130th and 131st Streets, two avenues west of Lennox Terrace. This is a 29-story or 300-foot-tall building. Also, Esplanade Gardens, which is 10 blocks north of Lennox Terrace, contains four 27-story buildings that are all over 250 feet tall, including mechanicals. So this is simply to note that though the largest residential building in, in this image, the proposed buildings wouldn't necessarily be the largest residential buildings in Harlem. Also to note, the applicant has stated that as the 284, 284-foot height includes mechanicals, realistically, the roof slab height of the proposed buildings would be closer to 260 feet in height. Many attendees of the public hearings stated concerns about transit. This is simply stating that DCP staff has confirmed with the MTA that based off the analysis for secret purposes, the transit station at 135th Street was not seen to be overcrowded. The station was made ADA accessible in 2008, and the MTA confirmed there is no capital project underway or planned in the near future. In regards to environmental mitigation, there were five categories of significant adverse impact identified. Mitigation has been identified so far for three of the five categories. Operational and construction traffic impacts would be fully mitigated through standard mitigation measures, including signal timing and lane restriping. One crosswalk impact would remain unmitigated. Construction noise impacts would be partially mitigated by a commitment to provide an alternate means of ventilation, such as air conditioning units or insulated glass windows to nearby As noted at the public hearing, the Lennox Terrace complex has been determined to meet the eligibility criteria for listing on the State and National Registry of Historic Space Places. Therefore, the proposed demolition of the five one-story retail structures contemplated as part of the proposed project would be considered a significant adverse impact. The partial mitigation developed in coordination with LPC identified for the historic and cultural resources would be recrodation on the Historic American Buildings Survey, or HABs, a Level 2 recrodation, which is maintained by the Library of Congress, and the standards are specified, specified by the National Park Service. In addition, there is a commitment to an interpretive program on the site.
The one other thing that I'll note here, because we had heard testimony where some, there was some suggestion that the city's Landmarks Preservation Commission might be considering this building for, or the complex for landmarking. I spoke with Sarah Carroll, who indicated that the agency determined, for the first time in 2009, that the buildings don't merit designation as individual landmarks and that their cultural significance would be best recognized through the eligibility for the National Register. They reconfirmed this position in 2017 as part of the environmental review for this project, and Sarah confirmed to me on Friday that there's no change to the LPC's position.
Thank you. So I will provide an update on the last two items for environmental mitigation at the next post-hearing follow-up on January 21st. Are there any questions on any of those items that covered so far before I turn over to Susan?
No, no, I'm just wanting to be sure that, that they're on the list.
Yes. So I've, I've already added for January 21st, applicant proposed change to zoning district to confirm what commercial overlay will be proposed. We'll also be adding in regards to Commissioner Knuckles' comments, the applicant proposed changes to site plan for the 21st. And item six will be the, the final two items for environmental mitigation.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. One clarification on the curb cuts. There were a number of modified curb cuts. Are all of those going to be expanded in size? And is that, that piece necessary?
They're not all modified in size. Some of them are slightly shifting in location. Some of them might be expanding in size. I can come back with more detailed information. For the purpose of analysis, they were, they're identified as, as new curb cuts if they are modified, but, you know, this is really the applicant trying to, you know, make do with the existing curb cuts that are there and match the existing curb cuts with the curb cut needs of the proposed site in regards to the new loading and parking needs for the below-ground structures.
In most instances, slight modifications of where they're located on the street or dimensions, but functionally equivalent curb cuts. And with the new ones being, the two major ones being the new one on 135th and on 133rd, and then the three on the map street, but the interior portion of the site.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I will...
Commissioner Levin.
On the topic list, we did hear a number of comments, and I do have some concerns, about the relocation of the commercial tenants and the tenoning of the, or the lack of tenoning of the building at 132nd and Fifth. I wonder if the applicant, in the course of all of this, is going to be able to address those issues for us as well. It's not so much a zoning issue, but it is, you know, the success of the commercial space. First off, the, the condition of the commercial space right now is problematic, protecting the existing commercial tenants. Those who have the capacity to endure the construction process will be important, and also being sure that the commercial space that does get built out, the retail space, is appropriate from a area needs and from a urban design standpoint.
So, like I said, when, when I come back on the 21st, I can address the particular commercial overlay that is, is being proposed for the site. And then item five, their retail, is kind of the all-encompassing umbrella of, of, of those concerns, and we'll have a applicant...
That'll include past and present.
Correct.
Okay.
And the, my understanding is that the applicant will be preparing a letter to the commission to, to highlight some of these concerns.
Okay. And I hope size of retail is on the list for one of the issues that's embedded in there.
Size of the proposed retail.
The proposed retail.
Sure.
Other questions on this portion? Okay, then it's over.
It's reported on the 3rd of February.
The 3rd of February, yep. So it will come back to another review session on the 21st.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Susan if there are no other questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna just very briefly address the comments about the Voting Rights Act. In the written comments, or in the written comments from, resolution from the community board, and in testimony at the hearing, there were a number of assertions that the requested actions here would violate the Voting Rights Act by essentially threatening the African-American plurality and African-American political power in the community board and in the council district. So I just wanted to sort of talk about what the Voting Rights Act actually focuses on. So briefly, the Voting Rights Act prohibits voting qualifications that could deny someone the right to vote, or standards, practices, or procedures related to voting that would have the purpose or effect of denying or abridging a citizen's right to vote on account of race, color, or non-English-speaking status. And among other things, it can include providing less opportunities to voter of one race than to voters of another race to participate in the political process and to elect representatives of their choice, and I think that's where the focus was. But it's important to note that historically, the practices and procedures that are challenged under the Voting Rights Act have been practices and procedures relating to voting. And so, in other words, they concern really electoral laws and electrical practices and not other types of actions that might affect a population. So claims involving dilution of voting power, which is what this is, typically involve rezonings that divide a community among several, several, I'm sorry, not rezonings, redistrictings that divide a community among several voting districts in order to dilute its strength, or redistrictings or annexations that bring a larger community and submerge a particular community within that larger community, again, to dilute voting strength. Or things that change the way elections are run, like providing for at-large voting rather than district voting. Again, trying to dilute communities into a larger group. And those are actually the three typical types of voting rights challenges that are brought. It doesn't appear that the Voting Rights Act has ever been used to challenge a municipal rezoning action that's been unrelated to voting procedures. And there have been academic articles that have proposed expanding the reach of the Voting Rights Act. It seems unlikely that, given the way the Voting Rights Act has, has been applied and what it says, that it would be extended beyond its current application to include oversight over what's really a typical municipal rezoning action. So I think, you know, we feel and consulted with city lawyers and confirmed that, that a zoning action that might affect racial plurality or any kind of plurality within a voting district would really not be a judicially recognized application of the Voting Rights Act. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or provide lots of articles to people.
And just to confirm that in addition to Susan's analysis, we work with the law department on this, the city's law department as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks.
So any remaining questions, then, we can cover on the 21st when we consider, when we continue our discussion.
Sylvia Lee is here to discuss 503 Broadway.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This will be fairly brief. As you may recall, this is an application to legalize an existing retail store of over 10,000 square feet at 503 Broadway, so Zara, in an M15B district on your DASs. My staff has, have distributed a letter from Soho Broadway Initiative, the local bid, as a follow-up to its testimony at the hearing. The bid has done a lot of work to put forward recommendations for potential, you know, appropriate sound levels and noise reduction measures for nighttime deliveries that potentially applicable to this site and, and, you know, other operators in the area, as well as how accountability could potentially be established moving forward. Notably, the letter states that the bid intends to convene a task force composed of stakeholders in the area and city agencies to further study policy recommendations and best practices regarding loading activities, in particular in this mixed-use district. We think it would be important for this applicant to commit to continue working with the bid and Community Board 2 on these efforts to come. We are also working with the applicant team to make changes to its proposal to address the residents' concerns and needs for quality of life improvements on Zara's site, as well as kind of recognizing Zara's operational needs, also taking into account DOTs of our delivery program and its various benefits. Once these changes are finalized, we'll share with the commission, likely a letter this week digitally to the commission. An option currently being explored is to restrict merchandise, pickups, and deliveries on Mercer Street Frontage to the hours between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Nighttime loading activities and deliveries may still occur on Broadway, given that this is a truck route, commercial corridor, generally that ambient noise levels are accepted to be higher. And we've also discussed and found out more about the DOTs of our delivery program, and I make sure that we want the future practices to be generally consistent with DOTs initiative.
I'll just note that we are fortunate in that we have an applicant that is being extremely cooperative. The bid has stepped up in a big way. We're working with DOT, and we hope that we'll come up with something that recognizes the fact that Broadway is a major trucking route, that the side streets have a different character. And we welcome what the Soho Broadway Initiative has put forward as hiring consultant, actually taking this seriously. Their letter suggests that somehow it would be written into the special permit. We don't see ourselves as the type of monitoring agency that is actively involved in oversight, but are welcoming this and believe that our report should favorably note the role of the bid. I think it's particularly important because in approving, were we to approve the special permit, we, one, are setting a template for other businesses in the area that would come in to seek a special permit. And we also would have to recognize that in granting the special permit, not all applicants might be as cooperative. And so that, those are all the factors that we're still engaged in conversations with, with the bid, with the applicant, and with the DOT. Commissioner Deloos.
You know, that being said, the, the council member could request some kind of side agreement as part of their process.
Absolutely.
Right? That takes into consideration the level of detail. And I, I, you know, I just want to say I really appreciate the bid stepping up like this. It's great.
Commissioner Levin.
I also really respect the seriousness and comprehensiveness of the applicant's engagement with us, the folks they sent to testify. They're taking, yeah, so I do hope that our report on this sort of goes into some detail. This is, this is a model of engagement, successful engagement in the Eulert process, I think. And it is something of a template for the way applicants, we would hope, would approach working with us. So the report could lay that on a little bit. It'd be helpful, I think.
Will do. Commissioner Ortiz.
I, I can't help but noting, we're dealing with a side street situation here, and, you know, a community that has requested just some considerations to maintain, you know, a street that actually has a lot of retail on it, but to maintain it in some way that, that feels more residential, at least, at least from a noise perspective. And, and yet, in many other instances, we're adding commercial to residential streets without necessarily taking into account the same considerations. So I would hope that, you know, we, we think about the same concerns when we overlay retail in residential communities across the city.
I noted, I would also note, though, that the size of the retail is one of the key factors here, the fact that it's over 10,000 square feet, which we're not seeing frequently in the other commercial overlays.
May I just add? We just saw an application... May I just add, we just saw an application for 25,000 square feet in a residential community with nothing around it. So I think that, you know, clearly there are instances where they are, that it is over 10,000 square.
No, obviously, but the nature of the retail, we would anticipate being smaller rather than being a Zara. Other questions? Okay, so we, at the next review session, we'll come back with more details, which we anticipate will be in the form, at least in part, in the form of a letter from Zara to the commission.
And finally, for post-hearing follow-up, mainly to see if there are any further questions, 2513 2523 Avenue O rezoning. Okay. Any other business? If not, this concludes the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, January 6, 2020. The time is 3:51.